You're watching GCTV. Community Access Table, Channel 15 in Greenfield, Massachusetts.
Welcome to the first council meeting of 2020. Can everyone hear me okay? This sounds good? Okay, great. We're going to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Greenfield City Council January meeting. It's our 201st regular meeting. It's, we're going to call this meeting, we're at 7:14 PM. We're at the John Zahn Community Center at 35 Pleasant Street in Greenfield. Chair statement. So this meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and not broadcasted tonight. We're not live tonight, folks, but you will be able to watch the, I say the episode, at a later date on GCTV. If any other persons are present doing the same, please let me know at this time. We have the recorder. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call of our members, please.
Counselor Jarvis.
President.
Counselor Gwynn.
President.
Counselor Disorder.
Here.
Counselor Bottomley.
Here.
Counselor Dolan.
Here.
Counselor Gilmore.
Here.
Vice President Wheeler.
Here.
Counselor Mayo.
Here.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Here.
Counselor Elmer.
Here.
Counselor Forgie.
Here.
Counselor Ricketts.
Here.
President Stempel.
Madam President, if you have a question.
Thank you, Clerk. May I, at this time, ask members of the council to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And as a reminder, this is voluntary.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with a reason and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that being said, we, do I hear a motion to approve the October 1st, October 16th, November 19th, November 20th city council meetings? Move second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Raise high for abstentions, please. We have Counselor Gwynn, Disorder, Forgie. Thank you. And next, Communications for the Superintendent of Schools and the School Committee, please.
Good evening. Congratulations to the council members that are newly elected. And congratulations to all of you that are new in your roles or offices. Thank you for our service, your service, to our community. And obviously, I represent the schools, so in particular, thank you for your representation and leadership that will serve the students and children of Greenfield throughout your tenure on the council. It's January 20th, 2020, so I just wanted to have fun saying 202020 while I'm sitting here. I always bring you, oh, it's the 15th, yeah, sorry. On Monday, which will be January 20th, 2020, we will have no school, so I wanted to tell you that, because I wanted to say 202020. I always bring you some tidbits from the school. So, this coming Monday, we have Dr. Martin Luther King Day. We won't be in school. You can think about me and my silly 202020 all day. The following days next week, our early release for midterms at the high school, grades eight through 12. On Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we dismiss at 11:15. On Friday, there is no school because of a teacher in service. And of course, in February, we have the winter break, February 17th through 21st. I know many of you, ah, thank you, I know many of you saw students from Greenfield High School participating in the Community Service Day just before the break, and I just want to thank those of you that participated, and to tell you what a meaningful opportunity this is for our young people, whether they were making blankets, working on friendly cards with seniors in the Greenfield High School cafeteria. There's so many ways that folks in the community participate with our youngsters, and we really appreciate it. And of course, many of you also spoke recently with our youth at the high school, and I want to thank you for your encouragement of their voice and hearing them and taking them seriously. At the high school, I did want to let you know that we started a new program called "It Starts With Hello." You may have received cards. I got this one. It says, "Thanks for bringing 'It Starts With Hello' to our district." And it really encourages positive relationships among students, and really develops this way of students connecting with one another, seeing each other, reaching out across differences, and having conversations. So on that theme, I hope that we all can work together between the schools and the council. I'm here to answer any questions, as always, and I will also allow the School Committee Chair a few words.
Good evening, councilors. Welcome to all the new people. Congratulations to President and Vice Presidents Stempel and Wheeler, respectively, and I look forward to working with all of you in a very collegial way over the course of the year. I'm thrilled to be serving as Chair of the School Committee, and I've been a School Committee member for 13 days and Chair for seven days, so please be kind.
Counselor, Counselor Wheeler, Vice President Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question for each of you. I will, since there's so many people in the room, I'll start with you, Chair, Priety. We have the Unit C contract before us for first reading tonight. However, the way that it's being put to council, it's only partially funded, i.e., it designates an amount from the executive and an amount from the school committee's budget items. Obviously, that was a prior mayor who initiated that order, but if, and this certainly is not coming to a vote tonight, although we would like to. But I wanted to just ask you if School Committee will be revisiting that, or whether School Committee would wait for a vote from council before revisiting that?
Thank you for the question, Vice President Wheeler. That's an excellent, excellent question. I will answer that by saying that in this new makeup of the School Committee and makeup of the council, we look forward to working with you in a very collaborative way. And I know, I've had a conversation with Liz Gilman, and I've talked extensively with Superintendent Harper about the best way to approach moving forward on this. And our number-one priority is to get this contract funded. These folks need to be recognized for the work that they do. And I should also add, this is a much larger conversation, and I'm not skirting your direct question at all. This is a much larger conversation of where we sit as a district in comparison to districts around us. And just anecdotally, I know of three very skilled professionals that we've lost this year to other neighboring districts for increased salaries in the amount of $10,000 to $20,000 additional compared to what they make in Greenfield. And that's significant, and I hesitate to use this word, but it borders on being unacceptable, and we need to find a way to resolve that. And those are not the people in this contract. The people in this contract are making significantly less than the folks that I'm talking about who have left the district. And we have IA positions that are unfilled, and we are struggling to be safe in our schools because of it. And so again, I would say, we need to figure out a way to work together to fund this contract.
Seeing no questions from councilors, we did ask, I guess now might be an opportunity for us to have a discussion about the Green River School. It is on the agenda tonight, and it's been back and forth, back and forth, table on the table, off the table, throughout 2019. And I think it's the will of the council to hear it and move forward. And so I think the best way to move from here at this moment is to maybe perhaps, especially for new councilors who might not be familiar with this issue, to perhaps backtrack a little bit and learn a little bit more. I know there's a pilot plan that some current councilors might have been aware of, but perhaps we can just talk about the school, the purpose of the school, and how funding this heating system will get us moving in the right direction.
So first of all, this is an important community asset, not just to our schools, but to our community. And I know a number of city subcommittees and other committees are interested in looking at the topic of preservation of our buildings and preventative maintenance and maintaining them. So from that angle, I want to say that the program that we put into Green River School is important because it represents the needs of our students. However, it's also important simply that there is heat, because any program that we put into this building will require that we adhere to municipal law, which includes that municipal buildings are heated in order to occupy them with any program that the School Committee might approve. I operate under approval of the School Committee, and the School Committee has approved sometime back a pilot program for Green River School, and it reflects our need for an alternative high school program. Now, I can't sit here and tell you that this will be the final plan that goes into that building, but that is what I have a vote of the School Committee, that's what I'm authorized to move forward. Last year, we proposed this, and we did not have the funding to staff the program. So we have conflicting timelines. We have to put forward proposals, but we also have to work within the budget timeline as set by the charter and state law, and we have to fund whatever proposal we put forward. The alternative high school program is a strong proposal because it's small, it's nimble, it meets current needs, students that need an alternative to a traditional high school setting, that want to be involved in career and technical and job-embedded options in our community. Students for whom, they might be bright, they might be motivated, but being in the high school building is not a viable option for them. And students that, if we do not have an alternative program, we simply have lost them. And because we're educators and because we care about every student, we don't want to fail our students. We want to meet them where they are and find a workable way for these students to have an option to career in college. So this is a small proposal that we think does just that. And we're asking that you put in a heating system, so we can give it a try. Ultimately, there's other places, maybe this might end up somewhere else over time, and then we could continue to use the Green River School for some of the other needs that are existing in the community, but those needs might be more expensive, and staffing, some of the other things that I've heard around the community, like why not open up another elementary school? Well, the cost of opening an entire elementary school, when we're struggling to fund the contract of the wonderful people we have right here behind us, is simply out of the question right now. So I'm asking that the council take very seriously the MSBA state funding that poured into this beautiful building to renovate the roof, the windows, the heating system, the extensive renovation that's gone in to remove asbestos from the building, so this building is perfectly ready to be occupied as soon as it has a heating system. And that MSBA funding is subject to continuing to use this building for an educational purpose. And to delay further, it might not be the perfect proposal for this building forever, but to delay further jeopardizes those state funds, and I really think that that would be a loss for our community when we treasure every cent that goes into education, and this council has prioritized education. So let's make use of the state money that was already put into that building and put in a program that we think meets our needs. And if down the road, the School Committee makes, as is their authority, any changes or updates to this proposal, then we'll certainly inform the council, and we'll continue to do so. So I hope that is as helpful to you as I can be in a transparent way, and still respecting the different, it's a complex process, it really is. And, you know, we have significant other funding needs, as you can see in this room here tonight. So I think this is the clearest, most straightforward path to bringing a sound educational use for that building.
Vice President Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Madam Superintendent. Getting back to what you said earlier about the hello card and the spirit of working together, I think often we operate under Byzantine regulations of different sorts, and occasionally, we do have to work together. But we have before us tonight Kozmescus Bus Contract, which I believe should have come to the council earlier, and I just want to kind of raise it before you to make sure that contracts do, that are for over three years, do come before council, because that is part of the charter. And I'm sure it was just an oversight, but I'm hopeful that that can always be the case going forward. And it's not really a question for you, I just, I hope that we can continue to work
Counselor Forgie.
If you would be so kind as to help me understand this, what is the purpose of, what purpose does the school, does Green River serve at the moment?
Currently, there's no student occupation in the building. So the building has been a number of things. It has been a grade school, grammar school. It has been a middle school satellite program. That's been an alternative middle school model, and currently, there's no students in there, but we're proposing an alternative high school program.
How long has the building been unoccupied?
Two, two years.
Three years. Two, I'm sorry. This is just for a heating system, it's for no other capital outlay?
That's correct.
Okay. Is, trying to remember here, who actually owns the property? Is it the school or the town?
The town, the city owns the property.
Okay, city, thank you.
But the School Committee is responsible for the programming, essentially, the curriculum and content.
Okay. And you mentioned before that last year, you had to postpone this project because you didn't have enough funding for the staffing of this program. You have that funding now in place?
Last year, we had two problems. One, there was still no heating system. And also, as we moved through the budget process, it became clear that adding to the budget for new positions was a challenge when we were focusing on keeping existing positions and the current needs. We do anticipate some increase in Chapter 78 from the state this year. Having said that, the Department of Education has been very clear that we need to create a plan for how we are going to use those funds in such a way that's consistent with the regulations, and that's still unfolding from the Department of Education. And so that, there's more information that we need from them as we work with that. So again, we're looking at the most cost-effective proposal, and we do think that we have the best shot, while the budget, nobody sitting here tonight can tell us for certain what the budget will hold, but we think we have a good shot at getting a program like this through, and it certainly meets the needs of our students.
Would this only be for Greenfield, Greenfield students, or will there be people, students tracing in and out? Will we be recruiting from other districts as well?
Right, exactly. So primarily, it would serve the needs of Greenfield students, but what we've seen is that anytime we create a program that's strong and robust, that students from area districts that may not have access to, that they tend to come for those programs. So we may very well have students that choice in to participate in that program.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I saw a hand over here. Was it Counselor Elmer? Did you raise your hand? You're all set? I saw Counselor Gwynn's hand first.
I'm pretty familiar with that building. I spent many years over there. I was a campus school.
Turn your mic on, Dan.
I see, reading this briefly, it said to start a program with 10 to 15 students proposed. What percentage of that building, because that's not a small building, but with 10 to 15 students, what percentage of that building is going to be occupied with 15 students? I'm just trying to think of that layout of that building, is there going to be a large portion that's still available for other programs? I'm just trying to see complete use in, with dedicated funds to that size building for 15 students.
Right, so the building, as you're familiar with it, has sort of two wings to it. It's generally speaking, seven classrooms plus a library, a beautiful cafeteria, gymnasium space, you know it well. We would not need to use all seven classrooms, there would be some additional space that we could build additional programming onto. We have talked, for example, about collaborations that would allow us to have an alternative high school program, plus an early childhood or child studies center that gives students an opportunity to come over and learn some skills, some hands-on skills, and get some early childhood credit while providing a needed service. So our idea is to start with the basic need and then continue to add in, but again, because we accepted MSBA funding, the types of use are very restricted. For example, we can't use it for office space. We can't rent out some or all of the building. So, you know, with any kind of funding, there's a number of regulations and stipulations, and this is no exception. So it's a very good question. We don't anticipate it would necessarily fill the whole building. We still, regardless, think it's the best way to begin reopening that building.
Thank you.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes, Superintendent, if we pass the $460,000 for new heating system, when would that be available for the building? When would it be up to, when would it be completed?
That's a very good question. So it's my understanding that the city would run the procurement process, which would have to be compliant with the state bid law, including 30B, and that can take some time. You have to post it, you have to solicit bids, you have to award the bid to somebody, they have to be able to schedule and begin the work. And of course, when they're in there doing the work, we all know that if you've done any home repairs, it always goes longer than you think it's going to. So I think we're on a short order here between now and the start of next school year. I think it's going to be close, even if it were passed through tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, unless you have anything else to add?
Very minor, just point, that the only thing I would add is, I want to remind the council that the makeup of the program that the school choose, the school department chooses to put into that building is beyond the purview of the council. We get to decide as the School Committee, when the school department, what goes in there. You need only to know that a program exists.
One more question, Counselor Disorder.
Was there any damage that was caused to the building by there being no heat in it for, over the length of time that it's been without heat?
I can't speak to that specifically. I only know that it's not recommended, that a building continue to go without heat. In general, I can say that all of our facilities work. Anytime we sort of un-mothball a building or de-winterize it, we do discover some, even if it's just small, some additional work that needs to be done, and that's, you know, sort of unnecessary maintenance if we're able to keep the building up and running.
Counselor Forgie.
I have a question.
Can you please use your microphone? Thank you.
I can yell. Is it appropriate for me, I have a question for Ms. Gilman. Is it appropriate to ask her at this particular point, because it does concern funding for this?
Directory for the schools, I don't see a problem.
Is that, okay. So I'm...
As long as she uses her microphone.
I'm wondering if, step right up. Thank you. I am wondering if the town, the city, actually owns the building, then does, and you mentioned that we have to go forward and accept bids under 30, 32B and everything else. Where is this funding held in a line item in the budget? In other words, is it transferred over to the school department side, or is it put into a capital line item on the administrative side, on the city side of government? Where is that?
It resides in a capital fund. When any capital project is authorized, it's set up in a capital fund. And right now, you know, there was the Green River School project, but that was closed out, as Superintendent Harper indicated. But we did accept MSBA funds for that building.
Okay. So I guess the question that I'm having here is, there has been, this is not being built into the school department budget.
So Superintendent...
It's being held as a special, it'll be, excuse me, it'll be a special capital project that might have a school department designation of 300 as a department number.
Oh, correct. Absolutely correct.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. The only other thing I would say, as Superintendent Harper indicated, is the actual programming they need to build in their budget, not necessarily the heating system, okay? So the staffing.
But the motion that we have...
The motion you have before you is a capital project fund designated with a 300 department code for the school department.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just before you walk away, I just, thank you, Director Gilman. And so you speak of it as a capital project, and I'm curious why a project of this stature wouldn't be on the capital projects list, or was it? And I'm misremembering.
Because of how long this has been going on, there had been an order submitted, so we did not want to duplicate it. So it, yes, it's been on the table for a long time.
Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And congratulations to you too, Chair.
Is that the right word?
Next, we have communications from the mayor, city officers, and any employees. At some point, I will invite Director, I would say Director Marlowe, but Director Warner to the table as well.
Good evening, councilors, and congratulations to all of you, returning councilors, councilors who have been councilors and are now back, and brand-new councilors. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight for our first council meeting of the new year and of a new decade. It's been a jam-packed 12 days for the mayor's office, or 13 days, I think it is, which also included two school committee meetings. As most of you know, I've hired Danielle Letourneau as my chief of staff, and she has been tremendously helpful in our getting up to speed. She spent a great deal of time prior to my taking office with Mark Smith to find out everything she didn't know. And I've also hired William Bill Stathis as the admin assistant, and I have a funny story. He arrived on Monday, and as I was contemplating his arrival, I realized that the way he will answer the telephone and the way he's been answering the phone since Monday is Mayor's, Mayor Roxanne Wiedegartner's office, Bill, speaking. So if you are confused, it is indeed the one William Bill Stathis, the one and only. I truly look forward to a mutually respectful and collaborative working relationship between the council and the executive office going forward, one that involves open communication and civil, and a civil atmosphere in which to air our differences, as well as our mutual agreements about doing what's best for Greenfield. Also with me tonight and available for questions are Energy and Sustainability Director Carol Collins, Finance Director Liz Gilman, and DPW Director Marlowe Warner. Collins, Finance Director Liz Gilman, and DPW Director Marlowe Warner. I too, I just call him Marlowe, to answer any questions you have regarding on the agenda. Normally, my remarks to you won't be lengthy, but I have a lot to report out to you tonight, so bear with me. I'm strongly encouraging you to approve the recycling contract tonight. It's on a very tight schedule for the end of the month. Marlowe is here to explain all of that to all of you who may not have already heard it before in various ways leading up to tonight's meeting, so that's one of the things he'd certainly speak to. I also strongly encourage you to fund the heating of the Green River School. It is a city building used by the schools, and it has been unheated for a long time, and I think we can all agree that that is not the best way for us to treat our property. We all live here. We know what happens when you leave a building unheated for over a long period of time. I know that we talked briefly about this at your reorganization meeting, I believe it was, but I want to reiterate that all of the department heads remain available to you as information resources. However, I do ask that you understand that they are all very busy and may need some time to respond to your questions in a, as timely a manner as possible. They are there to help both you and I, or all of you and I, but they report to and take direction from me. So depending on the magnitude of your request, you may need to run it by Danny or me first. They're most likely going to ask you to do that anyway, so, you know, we'll play with, you know, figure out that as we go along. But they are definitely there to help you. And I would thank you for keeping their workload in mind as you reach out to them. You do have a library feasibility study request for $150,000, and I want you to know that that is by no means urgent. I have already a great deal of information about what needs to be done in that building in order to make it fully usable. So we're working on prioritizing that list because it is still open as a library and will continue to be until the, until the new one's built. And should the need for additional feasibility study be required later, at a later date, when maybe we have built the library or it's nearing its completion, and we are then contemplating how we're going to use that particular building going forward, whether it's to prepare it for sale or to prepare it for further and more extensive use, I may come back to you for money, but we have no need to spend that kind of money at this time. Couple of items on my list, other items on my list here. You also have a report coming up from the GAHP, the Greenfield Area Housing Partnership, tonight. I met with the members of that group earlier today, and they have shared that report with me. Know that I will begin to work on the scope and responsibilities of a permanent housing partnership, as I campaigned on, but that will likely be a spring project for me. The library building committee and the public safety committee have been named. The library building committee meeting is, the first one is this week. We'll be talking about the importance of the timeline, particularly in relationship to the, to the public safety building. That's a big part of that agenda, but there's probably other things that I don't remember yet at this time. The public safety committee hopefully will be meeting at a date fairly soon, but we have a small committee of people from that building committee, Chief Strahan among them, Eric Troag, a couple of others, who are reviewing bids for the OPM, the project manager, and hope to make their choice along with my input by next week. So I feel like it's important that we have an OPM in place before we have a full meeting of the building committee. And members of either committee, if you're listening, watching, or whatever, and you haven't been sworn in, please go to Kathy and get sworn in. Thank you. Regarding boards and commission vacancies, I have requested, I'm requesting a list, and I know that there are many vacancies out there, so get ready for some appointments, appointments in ordinance committee and councilors, but that'll be a little while incoming as well. And again, to members of the public, we do have vacancies. We would love to have people come forward and volunteer for those committees that have vacancies, and we'll make that public as soon as we have what I feel is a complete list. Now, last, but certainly not least, is the Unit C contract, which you have before you tonight, and I think it's very important that we have that, that we're beginning that discussion. I wish to make a statement regarding the decision on your agenda for the Unit C contract tonight. Before you is that financial order to fund the instructional assistant contract. The instructional assistants have bargained in good faith and deserve to be paid sooner rather than later. I do believe we are in this situation because of a communications breakdown that occurred months ago and had nothing to do with me. Except I am hoping, I'm hoping that we have better communications all the way around between the school committee and the executive office, and the council too as well. But it is, it is a priority of ours that this contract get funded within, within a very reasonable amount of time. The $169,099 represents approximately half of the IA contract. That also represents the retro amount, basically a half a year. The total of the first-year contract is in the neighborhood of $350,000. Prior financial orders in the past, so a past practice, if you will, for union contracts have been for the retro amounts of union contracts. The source named in the financial order is the Special Education Stabilization Fund, and the rationale behind that is the 75, is that 75 to 80% of IAs are special education The school department also carries a higher balance in the revolving funds than in the general stabilization fund. Prior to the school committee ratification of the contract, a conversation did take place with the school administration regarding the sharing of the cost of the instructional assistant contract. On all sides, there was a communication breakdown, as I mentioned, and we are committed to working together to improve communication over time and working together as best we can to, to fund that contract, as I said, sooner rather than later. And I'm here certainly to answer any questions about anything on your agenda tonight, and Director Gilman is certainly willing to handle any questions you have on this item or any other financial items. And thank you. Thank you for indulging me for a while here. It's been a busy week. Okay. Do you have questions now of me, or I'll be back there, and I'm happy to come up as needed.
Counselor Ricketts.
First of all, welcome, Mayor. I'm so glad that you brought up about the library and the feasibility study. I'm so glad that that can go on the back burner. I thought that was a lot of money for nothing right now, and as everyone in this room knows, that money could be used for so many other things, so thank you for that. Next, I really want to thank you for talking about all the open seats we have on boards and committees, and I'm so glad that that's going to be made public so we can get everybody involved. So there's a lot of strength in this community, and so it'll be so good to have that advertised so, you know, we can get all our boards up to speed. So already, you just hit the ground running, and I am so proud to serve with you, and thank you for this.
Running is the operative word.
Keep your sketches on.
Thank you, Counselor Ricketts.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Do you, are you planning on your budget period coming up, fully funding the schools, unlike your predecessor?
I guess I have to see all of the budgets first, really. Fully funding a school is, is a collaborative effort and a mutual effort between the city and the school department. So as I said before, I'm committed, as a school committee member, as well as the mayor of Greenfield, with responsibility for funding many, many things in that 52-plus, well, we don't know what next year brings, but at least 52-plus million dollars. So that would be the way I would approach it, and we are beginning to work on that right now, in fact.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'd also like to invite Director Warner to the table at this time.
I'd like to say I congratulate the new councilors that are aboard and welcome back the sitting councilors. I would like to give a, speaking of running, give a quick update on some of our larger projects that were, that was approved for capital back in July. Quick update on snow and ice. I actually have some information on new trash contract outside of the recycling contract that you have before you tonight. So the Lydenwood's pump station went out to bid. We had a pre-construction meeting today. The project's expected to start in March and be completed by August 1. We signed the contract with Baltasar Corporation, and we came in somewhere around $90,000 under our appropriation, so that was a very good bid. The meter project, we also signed the contract on that. We're all set. That came in at about $982,000 out of the 1.15 in appropriation, so, so far, so good. That's going to be about a two-year project. We're going to start with the larger meters first, two-inch and above. We did a propaganda study, and we feel that that's where a lot of our meters are either faulty or high loss of revenue. Our current consent order that we went through, we just received it on January 6th, officially signed by the city and DEP, so the talk, the clock is ticking two years from January 6th. Phase one of the inflow and infiltration study, INI, is complete. I'm expecting a report sometime this month so we can start developing a construction contract on, let's say, half of our problem areas in the city. Last month, the appropriation was given for phase two of that project, and as soon as weather permits, the consultant firm and the construction companies will be starting in on phase two, so we'll have an idea at the end of that project where we stand on our worst issues with our sewer system going forward and develop our construction costs. Snow and ice, just a quick update, we're about 40% spent of the overall budget. We've only plowed snow four times. Three of them storms went well over 24 hours. We had some long shifts. It wasn't so much the depth of the snow and ice, but it was the duration to keep it off the roads. The last storm, we actually had to treat the road three times, being that it dropped below freezing, and we were dealing with freezing rain and sleet for over 16 hours, so we had to do what we had to do to keep the roads and city facilities safe. So the trash contract, expect to see that coming up in the next couple of weeks. That is also expiring June 30th. We're paying $82.50 a ton right now. All indications are that it will be a three-year contract with an option of a two-year extension beginning at $82 a ton July 1st. So it's actually going down to $50 a ton, which will be about a $9,700 savings a year as opposed to what we're paying right now. So the recycling contract, if you would like me to speak to that now, I think I spoke to most of you, but some of you probably haven't heard about it. Our contract with the MRF, the Materials Recycling Facility, expires June 30th of this year. I believe that was a 10-year contract. So back in May, May of 19, bids went out. The MRF, I'll call it the MRF for short, is actually owned and operated by DEP, the state. 74 communities have brought their materials, their recycling materials. So when they went out to contract, we received notice that they weren't going to decide on a contract and negotiate the final contract until September, and we would hear in September. Well, we didn't hear until the beginning of October, and they put a deadline on communities signing a five-year deal with two five-year extensions for January 30th. So speaking with the MRF Advisory Board, my staff and I have attended many meetings in Northampton and Springfield. We were shocked by what we needed to pay. No one expected it, neither did DEP, I suspect. So we're receiving $6 a ton right now. Two years ago, we were receiving $22 a ton. So that is going to reciprocate to us having to pay $93.50 a ton to bring it there. We've looked into many, many other situations. We've looked into other, other areas we can bring it. We've looked into dealing with other companies, other facilities. I found a much better deal per ton, but we would have to haul all the way to Berlin, Connecticut. So they came in at $87.50 a ton. You do the math with overtime, trucking, fuel, carbon footprint, you can throw that in on the end there, it'll probably be an even wash, or maybe even cost us a little more money in the long run. So there are a few opportunities to save a little money off this contract. Glass is a problem. DEP wants to see glass out of our stream. So we're working on those kinds of things with different working groups. We have no solid answers at this point. If we remove glass out of our stream, it'll save us $5 a ton. The issue I ran into with that is our trucks are only set up for dual-stream, you're glass tin and plastic on one side of the truck, paper, cardboard on the other. We don't have three divider trucks, nor would I suggest we invest in $3 million worth of trucks to save $5 a ton. But going forward, there is now an improved use for crushed glass. I can mix it in with my gravel and use it under sidewalks when I build sidewalks. So it's kind of a fluid situation right now to save a few dollars. We're working on, how do we offset the $93.50? And to jump back to the trash a little bit, we, we didn't get a contract until after budget was set this past cycle. So we're, we're running about $70,000 short this year on trash disposal. We've, we've made some adjustments. We're doing our best to make that up. So the recycling contract, there are 74 communities. There has to be a minimum of 17,000 ton per year brought in for this contract in order for waste management to accept the contract or agree with DEP to do this. That remains to be seen. Some of the communities further south that have the heavier tonnage... Some of the communities further south that have the heavier tonnage are pulled out because now they can go to Berlin, as I suggested, for a lot cheaper money. They're hauling it 20 miles down the road. So, again, it's a fluid situation. I think we're going to be able to make the numbers up. You know, we're looking at sticker fees for the trash bags. We're looking at the window decals. We're looking at everything that already produces a revenue at the transfer station. We're doing comparisons for multiple other communities to see where we sit now with our existing fees to, so we can, I can make a logical or a good recommendation to the mayor as far as, you know, our pricing going forward. They're calling it gloom and doom, but, you know, going to all these meetings and whatnot, it's just, it's a cycle. Most folks, professionals above myself, think that we're going to come out of this cycle in a couple of years. But it is a five-year contract and it reciprocates up 2.5% per year under that 93.50 starting this year. So, I think that's kind of the nuts and bolts of where we're at. I apologize, I held off. I wanted to put this on the October council meeting. In fact, I sent it in. Then I was advised to pull it, pull it off. We're, we're trying to work with DEP and waste management to try and get these numbers down. One last little thing, there's an average monthly value of recycling. So, if we sign this contract, and the contractor has to, it costs them more than 93.50 a ton to process and ship out, then we got to pay the higher rate. It could be 95 a ton. But it also goes the other way. If it only costs them $80 to, to process the material, it's $13 less per ton. An example is, our contract is $6 a ton this year, but last month, the, the product gave us $22 a ton. So, it's very volatile. It fluctuates quite a lot, but from month to month. And we're hoping that it averages out at the end of each year to where we, we're not as, as bad as what we feel we need to budget.
Councilor Gilmore.
All right, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm following this. I thought you said that this contract was going to go up by two and a half percent a year over those five years. You also said that it fluctuates, so if the price goes down, we would get that money back. I don't understa, is it just that that's the estimate that they're giving us? I don't understand how it can be planned out at two and a half percent, but still fluctuate.
Right. That, that contract is projecting out five years of what they suspect the recycling it will cost, excuse me, that contractor to process the recycling through the MRF facility and to move it, move the product out. Now, they look at the product and where it goes, who needs it, the demand, it's like anything else. If they can move the product and process it for less than 93.50 a month, then we'll get the lower rate for that month. But there's also the possibility that if the market continues to crash, let's say, we'll have to pay more. But we are locked in at 93.50 a ton. Yeah.
Sorry, just as a follow-up. So, is that two and a half percent figure just something that they give us just for budgeting purposes so we can plan ahead? Because it sounds like it's not set in stone.
Correct. So, if you do the two and a half percent for next year, I think it's in the contract, it jumps to 95, 20-something. Again, it's all on the average monthly value. If it stays at 93.50, say it's stuck at 93.50 and they're moving it for 93.50, we'd get that 2.50 a ton credit. That's just a set amount that they're projecting of what it's going to cost them to process the product. Does that help?
Councilor Gwynn.
I know during chairs meeting, you threw a number out. And just for clarification, based on what we do now for recycling tonnage, what's this going to cost us?
Councilor Gwynn, what number is on that microphone?
One.
Our, our three-year average of recycling, recycling is 1,450 ton a year. So, you, you wrote it, and at 93.50 a ton, it came out to 136,000. That's an increase to the budget, whereas we were receiving up to 20, 40, $50,000 a year for recycling in past years. I have, just as, as information, I budgeted 140 because we don't know where the AMV is going to land us. It could be more than 136 per year. I rounded it just for, for conversation, but.
Thank you.
Councilor Ricketts.
Director Warner, I have two questions. My first one is, when it comes to the permanent parking and the signage, do you get the orders to take the signs down? Like, who does, who takes signs down for that?
We generally, in the past, since I've been back, it changed a little bit from when I was here before, when I, when I had left. But generally, we would get the order out of the mayor's office, the way it's worked in the past year, to remove. Parking was handled out of that office by a previous staff member. But I would receive my information to remove there unless it was something really standard or safety issue. We'd go and take care of it immediately.
Yeah. Because we were working really hard. I was hoping that Mayor Martin was going to remove them, especially from residential, so people would be using the parking garage. And there are so many permitted signs on Church Street and the top of High. And I just don't see the need for that many. So, I think maybe I need to contact parking and traffic, but I didn't know if you've already received the order and they just haven't come down yet. So, I just wanted to discuss that.
I've been to a couple of Parking and Traffic Commission meetings and it's been talked about. I, I know it went to the, the previous mayor, but I never officially received the order to remove and where. I think that was being determined of where, what places.
Yeah, there's still.
But I certainly will, will work with our new mayor on, on getting that accomplished. We can, we can backtrack on all that information. Even though it wasn't under our purview, we can definitely work on that.
And the, the last piece I have for you is, when it comes to the snow and ice storms, the businesses on Main Street, they, they need to do their sidewalks in front of their businesses. But around the parking meters, is that the city or is that the business? I mean, I saw that it finally got taken care of last week when it was like 70 degrees out of the blue. So, it was going away anyway. So, I, I feel bad that we kind of wasted that gas to do it finally then. But I wondered whose responsibility that actually is, if it is the business or does the town do it? Because I've been seeing some elderly folks climbing those banks. So, it's been just something that I'm wondering.
That, that's a really good question. It just so happens, the, the mayor and I talked about that specific thing today. In the past, many, many years, after a four to six-inch snowstorm, we'd go out there. Some of you remember our big growling snow blower out there with a big Detroit engine. And I could hear it on Country Club Road from Main Street. We'd pull all the snow away from the meters, gone the next morning, come downtown and it's pretty much two-thirds gone in one night. That had fallen, I guess, to the wayside when I had left two and a half years ago. I looked at the previous budget, trying to wrap my head around why wouldn't we do it? It's a safety issue. It's a loss of revenue. Because I think the order's been given by the police department, not the ticket, because folks can't get to the meters. I personally, going forward, would like to, to remove that snow in a timely fashion so that we can get the downtown back to full functionality after a snowstorm. We used to do it within 24 hours. It all depends how long the staff has been up to fight the storm to begin with. But I would like to make a conscious effort going forward on that to, to get back to the way, let's say, we used to do it. But in my, my 10-year way, the, the snow and ice budget, I looked at the history, it did get cut quite a bit. But we all know it's the one budget that we can deficit spend. So, I want to look at that going forward. I think it, it's, it's something we should do. That's my opinion. And as I said, the mayor and I talked about it today. I think we're on the same page with that, so.
Thank you very much, Ben. Thank you again, Mayor. Another second, my love. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Oh, any more?
One last thing. There's, there's a few compounds in our drinking water that have made local level, state news, national level. There's a lot of controversy. There's a lot of talking about it. And, and I can only abbreviate because I cannot pronounce the words. But PFAs and PFOs in our drinking water, I know it's come up. I believe the superintendent of schools has had a few questions. We have not been required to test for that compound. But hearing from EPA and whatnot, in, in 2020, it's going to become a mandatory thing. We decided to be proactive. We tested both of our intakes. The Leiden Glen, we, the, the wells at Millbrook, we tested. This is expected to be levels of parts per trillion before we have to treat. And it could be millions of dollars for, to treat our water system to get active plants in place to remove these compounds. I'm happy to report zero-detect in both of our intakes to our water system. So, I think that's very important. It's, it's coming on the radar. There's going to be a lot of discussion. We're going to be proactive and test our outgoing water, our wastewater too, because that'll be important to the anaerobic digester.
You are now dismissed.
Thank you.
And I see Director Collins, and it might be fruitful just to have the conversation now about the solar project, if you are still here? Hi.
I'm here for your questions, or I don't know if.
Perhaps just a quick overview of the solar project. I know that it has been on the table for a little while and we're hearing it tonight. And hopefully, we can move this project forward.
Great. So, I just spoke at the ways and means, so apologies to those of you with the double. But we're pursuing a project on the town's well field at the north end of town to do a solar array that will offset some of the city's electricity, save us money, do the right thing. And in this type of project, it's typically a 20-year term that a municipality enters into. It's called a power purchase agreement. The developer will own the solar array and the city benefits from the reduced electricity and hosting the site. So, before the council is, any contract that is over a three-year term must be approved by the council. So, the term of 20 years is what is before you. I tried to mix it up a little bit.
Yeah. I thought councillors might have questions, but it looks like no one has questions. So, thank you very much.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Because the police station is also.
Oh, sure, yeah. No, actually, Chief Hague did mention that you might know more about that and speak to that too, please. Thank you.
So, the city received a Green Communities grant in the amount of $125,593 towards a replacement of the failing heating system up at the police department, now that they will be remaining there for some years. So, we will be replacing, or pending your vote, we will be replacing those units with high-efficiency rooftop units that will save electricity, require no maintenance, and the majority of it is paid for. There will be also incentives. So, the amount that the council is approving is the maximum amount that we expect to spend. And in all likelihood, I can 99% guarantee it'll be below that. So, any questions?
Councilor Ricketts.
Well, I've seen you work, so I know it'll be lower than that. And I'm, I'm trusting you. And I think this is a really good use of our money, because when we do have that public safety building built, that building will go on the market. And this is what's going to make us get our top dollar for the property. So, this is really a win-win. So, thank you for all your work on this one.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, we'll have some communications from the Greenfield Affordable Housing Project Task Port, Task Force, and we'll have a report out on the progress made in 2019. Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Mike Penstraw and Amy Clark, and I here as co-chairs of the Greenfield Affordable Housing Project. And I wanted to take just a minute, first of all, to thank you for allowing us to be part of this project for the past year. And I want to summarize what it is you allowed us to do. And hopefully, as the mayor indicated, you will continue this project. So, as you are well aware, the plight of homeless people in our community came to our attention in a rather dramatic way with the encampment on the town green in 2018. And then, unhappily, the death of two young people who were camping behind McDonald's in January 2019. And in response to the awareness of this problem and widespread need to do something about it, Council President Rudy Reno appointed a task force to research the best practices for increasing the stack, the stock of affordable housing in Greenfield for our lowest-income residents. I'm a retired clergy person and was co-chair of this group from the Interfaith Council. Amy is a member of the Interfaith Council Housing Assistance Committee. The other members of the task force, we had a great group of people who brought really good experience and expertise to this group, and included Ginny Disorga from the Planning Committee, Kelly Pereira from the Greenfield Housing Authority, Judy Raper from the Greenfield Community College, Counselor Wheeler from our city council, Barbara Sekil, who is a property owner and manager and has a number of rental units and good experience working with low-income folks, Amy Timmons from ServiceNet, Garth Shanifelt, who is a representative, kind of a citizen-at-large, Sarah Cummings from Community Action. And two people kind of worked with us in an advisory capacity, Pamela Swartz from the Western Massachusetts Network in homelessness, and our own MJ Adams from the city of Greenfield, who was immensely helpful. And we, you have this report, I think, in your hands, and I encourage you to take a chance to read it. I'm not going to read the whole thing. You'll be relieved in all. Just to kind of hit a few highlights, we began by reviewing the 2014 housing study that was done, which indicated at that point that 20% of our town population fell within this lowest-income group, and we didn't have sufficient housing to meet their needs because of low income. And that that need has only increased since then as housing costs have gone up and their resources have decreased. The, you probably are aware that one of the, if not the most common way for folks in this lowest-income group to find housing is to apply for a rental voucher. And it will, sometimes it's not uncommon for them to take three years to get that voucher and then to have 90 to 120 days to use that voucher to find an appropriate rental unit, and they can't find it for a variety of reasons. And then they go back to the bottom of the list, or at least they have to go back on, on that waiting list. So, this is a really significant problem. We have a, we estimate about at least 100 people in Greenfield now who are homeless and who need housing. And the question is, how can we meet their needs? How can we provide housing for them? We need to find a way to increase the town supply of single-resident occupancy units which meet the rental voucher guidelines. And they can be, that could be new construction, or like a two, four, or a six-unit building, or it can be existing property that is renovated. We met for a year, once a month. I'm just going to briefly mention the folks that we met with as outside. I'm just going to briefly mention the folks that we met with as outside resources, and then Amy is going to tell you how we can actually increase our housing stock. So, we met with Pamela Schwartz, who is a director, as I said, of Western Massachusetts Network on Homelessness. We met with Rick Hart from the Friends of the Hampshire County Homeless, and Yvonne's House in Northampton. That's a group that started out very much like we did to kind of get space in churches for homeless folks, and then evolved into an advocacy group that has raised money and has been able to find money to actually put up three housing units. We met with Joe Gregary, who is from the Greenfield Housing Associates Incorporated, which is a nonprofit group that finds properties that can be used for low-income housing. We met with Peg Keller from the Mayor's Office of Community and Housing Development for the city of Northampton, and we met with our own Mark Snow, the Building Inspector in the city of Greenfield, who helped us think about some of the obstacles that people, that developers run into when they try to develop housing. And pulling together the experience and expertise of the folks who were on the task force and the people we talked with, we came up with a number of recommendations, which Amy is going to share.
And if some of this sounds to you a little bit like old news, it's because it is. We were supposed to report to you in November, and the agenda got a little too full for council, and then we were supposed to report in December, and there was a blizzard, so here we are. I don't know exactly how Mike feels, but I feel a little bit like I'm one of the weak links on this group. We had members of the committee who had expertise on planning, who had expertise on zoning, who had expertise on city government, who had expertise on housing, who had expertise on developing and renting, and I think maybe what Mike and I brought to the table was the ability to get some of the right people in the room to talk about things, and then to pull it into a recommendation. Listening to all the people that Mike mentioned, the number-one recommendation we heard was the need for a mayor-appointed, citizen-led, permanent housing partnership to support the efforts of the city. There are great efforts in the city, MJ Adams spoke to this, everybody has said to us, this would be the number-one thing that could come out of this project, to have this be a permanent subcommittee of the council, and we are delighted to have spoken with the mayor today, have her say that she would be looking to approve such a group, not this month, it sounds like, but in the next few months. So, it should be something that is codified by the Charter Review Commission to make sure that it is something that's lasting, and we have provided the mayor with sample documents from Northampton and Amherst for how they established their housing partnerships that we hope would be helpful. Other things that you will be talking about further this evening are things that we had hoped would be sort of novel ideas coming from us in November, and then you would discuss them, and it would look like it was a well-oiled machine, one thing following another, but you're going to be discussing these later on tonight. And we recommended, after hearing from all the folks who advised us, that you choose to adopt three-family housing by right, you'll be discussing that later on, adopt attached and detached ADUs by right, expand mixed-use zoning as appropriate throughout the city, reduce mandatory parking minimums, adopt reduced minimum lot sizes, reduced setback requirements, and other zoning relief measures when a defined percentage of a project is dedicated to permanent affordable housing. We also would like to see some staffing provided to the Greenfield Housing Associates Incorporated, which is the nonprofit arm of the Greenfield Housing Authority. There are five volunteers currently, Joe Gregary is one of them, who look to find properties that might be developable, but they really haven't had staffing to follow up when needed. So, at some point, again, that's not an immediate result of this, but at some point, we think it would be nice if they had some staffing. We also came up with some roles that a housing partnership might play, and I'll just mention a few of them. Advocating for CDBG funds to go towards renovated and affordable housing would be a role of a housing partnership. Advocating for housing of all types, not only affordable housing in single-room occupancies, but market-rate housing, senior housing, supportive congregate housing. One thing we would like to see the council and/or the mayor look into is researching and hopefully advocating for the Homes Eviction Ceiling Record Bill. That's a bill, I don't know if you can get Pamela Schwartz to come and talk with you, but she is eloquent on this topic. Whenever someone receives an eviction notice, they are on the list for evictions, and it's almost impossible for them to get their name off of that list. It's a huge concern for people who are trying to get into affordable housing, and I really hope that you will have her come, find a way to talk further with her about this. The town of Northham, the city of Northampton, the city of Springfield have both signed on in favor of this legislation. It would be a great outcome if Greenfield would be willing to do the same. I won't read all the rest of our possible items that a housing committee might discuss, but one of them, Advocating for Community Preservation Act, was something we put on there as a possibility, because that can address housing. I think at one point, it was mentioned as something we did recommend. It really is something that we recommended that you might want to look into further. Kelly Pereira was hoping to be here tonight, and she is, has been with Greenfield Housing for many years, and she's, had just gotten back from Mexico, hadn't even seen her children yet. So, she did come to the meeting with the mayor this afternoon, but she could not again come out tonight. She has six and a half years of experience with housing, but now she is the program director for the Three-County Continuum of Care at Community Action Pioneer Valley, and she has received that, or was given that position, because housing is the single-most identified to need in every community. Had she been here, she would have liked to tell you that there are all kinds of systemic reasons that people are homeless, but the tangible ones we need to think about as a municipality are that there is simply not enough housing to meet the needs, the housing that we do have is far too high a cost for people with low incomes to sustain, and even many of our community members with moderate incomes are struggling to afford housing, heat, electricity, and food. In Massachusetts, there are approximately 46 beds available for every 100 people with very low incomes. She also wanted to acknowledge the biggest housing crisis she has witnessed, which is that our housing authorities are finding it incredibly difficult to support people with lower incomes in utilizing vouchers, because the rents in the area are too high, our housing stock that is affordable doesn't meet the housing quality standards, and prospective tenants are turned away from housing authorities due to poor landlord references and curry issues. The Continuum of Care just supported the Greenfield Housing Authority and Franklin County Regional Authority in applying for new vouchers that will be available this spring to support people with disabilities experiencing homelessness in finding and maintaining housing, but we need units to fill, and we need landlords with a willingness to house a vulnerable population. Kelly says she's appreciative of the town council's efforts to look deeply into these issues and to ask this diverse group, the Greenfield Affordable Housing Task Force, with varied experience to get together every month for a year and look at the options for a broad-angle lens, and it's been fruitful. I hope you take what's being brought to you today as meaningful opportunities to create systems change right in our own community. We want to thank you, as Mike did, for allowing us to do our work on this project for a year. We thank all of the task force members for their time, for their knowledge, and we really look forward to what council, what a housing authority, what the mayor will work together to do for affordable housing in this community, and we thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do you have questions?
Open the floor for questions. Councillor Dolan.
Thank you all so much for your work over the past year. It's excellent to have this report as a resource as we move forward. I was just wondering if, in your investigations, you came across the ideas of limited equity cooperatives and community land trusts, and whether those would be valuable? And also, related to community land trusts, do you have suggestions for what the city can do with properties that are taken in tax title?
We are not at that deep a level as you are, and that's where the expertise came to our committee, and we know that those are the sorts of issues that need to be discussed and discussed, and those are the sorts of issues that a housing partnership, working totally focused on this, as you all are, will deal with. We know that's the sort of thing that we should be considering in this, in the city, and our task force was not up to that level of detail. We are up to advocacy, and we would, we will advocate for that.
Seeing no other questions, thank you so much. Amy, may I ask you a favor? Can you hand me the sign-in sheets on your way? Thank you so much. Oh, there might be, thank you very much. Is there one more over there? I might be. Thank you so much. All right, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for our two items, that is to appropriate the $36,423 for the police department, as well as the library fees of... I am not going to do that. I'm going to welcome the public for public comment. You will have three minutes to speak. You can come to our lovely, the hot seat, and make sure your microphone is green, so we can hear you. First on the list is Jean Wall.
Hi, I'm here to talk about the Green River School as a representative of the Planning and Construction Committee. We've talked at length about how foolhardy it is for the city to have a building with no heat, and that we, as a city, are responsible for taking care of the property, and that we really feel that a heating system is essential. The timeframe from the time that you approve the money to get the building heated is nine months to a year. So, just so you know, that it's not going to happen immediately because of the bidding process and all of that that are required by the government, but we have not voted on that, because our last meeting was snowed out, because we usually meet the day before you meet, but in the calendar this month is screwy, so we aren't meeting until next week, but I'm just here to advocate that you fund the heating system for the Green River School.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Voss. And please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Susan Voss. I live at 158 Log Plain Road in Greenfield. I work at the Academy of Early Learning in Greenfield as an instructional assistant, the best job I've ever had, and I am the Unit C representative for the GEA. I'm here tonight to speak about the Unit C contract and the need to fund this contract from the city side, and I will be brief, because it's a school night, and most of us have to get up early and see our kids in the morning. Step-one pay for the IAs is currently at $11.75. The Massachusetts minimum wage just went up to $12.75. The pay for IAs is the lowest in the region for Greenfield, and many IAs need second jobs. We do this work because we love the kids, and we love what we do, and we want to make a difference. This is a passion, this is not just a job. The second job that most of my colleagues have to have is to make a living and to pay the bills. Looking at some of the notes from my past meetings, an $11.75 pay rate means that quality people leave the schools, and they go to other schools, and they take jobs that have better pay, so that they don't have to have a second job. We have few substitutes, although that has gotten better since that rate went up, and there are a lot of vacancies within the school systems for children who need the support of a one-on-one, and they don't have them. This doesn't set our kids up, our students up, for success, and that's what we need to do. It's been five months since we've ratified, well, since we had the tentative agreement, and it was signed, let's see. Contract was tentatively agreed upon in August. This was ratified by the school committee in November, and then it was signed by Jordana Harper and myself the next day. All of the information went to the mayor, and it's been stalled since then. Susan Exstrom wrote some really interesting things on her Facebook page, and she is allowing me to share some. This is her opinion, this is not her opinion as a school committee person. The discussions from three years ago and six years ago for the contract all ended with the same comments, that they know it is not enough money, that the city should fund the contract, stop pushing this down the road for the next guy to worry about, the budget for the schools is wildly short of what is truly needed, the city needs to fund this contract, we need to set the bar higher. The minimum wage should be the lowest starting point, not what we reach for, not what we want to pay people, and not the way we're going to get quality people here. Please make the Greenfield schools the best that they can be. Give us the means to work with our kids and do our best to help them be the best. We could definitely be a quality destination school, but we need to put the money into it. Schools are important for the community, they'll bring people in, they'll keep people here. So, we are asking you to please fund our contract through the city side. Thank you.
Right on the dot. And I just wanted to make a note that I will be calling Greenfield residents to speak first, and then we'll circle back to our guests from other communities. So, next on our list is, we have Garrett O'Brien.
My name is Garrett O'Brien. I live at 72 High Street, Apartment 2 in Greenfield. I'm an instructional assistant at GHS in the RISE program. I'm also a member of the Unit C Bargaining Committee and the GHS Unit C Building Rep. Hard-working, loyal, and empathetic employees shouldn't be forced to either endorse a raise that could bring their family out of financial hardship, or endorse securing funds that their needy, vulnerable students rely on daily to aid in their special education. The current financial order proposed by the former mayor recommends that special ed reserve funds be used to fund Unit C raises. This is not only an irresponsible suggestion to resolve the Greenfield IAs unfunded raises, it's a downright insulting idea. Every day, IAs help our district's most disadvantaged kiddos through their most challenging moments in a manner that affords them the best possible long-term outcomes. Frequently, this job places many different types of stress on the egregiously underpaid Unit C staff, yet they persevere and come back, giving each kid a fresh slate to work with each morning. Do they show up day after day for their meager wages? I think not. They do it for the well-being of the kids that they have put so much stock into. If that isn't reason enough to find a way to fund Unit C contracts exclusively with city side accounts, then consider this. The low pay relative to other local IA pay will ultimately put Unit C staff in a difficult position, where many have to choose between livable wages and continuing to work with their dear students. After all, not all Greenfield Unit C staff... After all, not all Greenfield Unit C staff can continue to sacrifice their financial well-being and thus myriad lifestyle choices any longer in order to serve the students they deeply care for. If Greenfield paraprofessional wages remain as low as they are comparatively to neighboring districts' IA wages, then we could witness an exodus of Greenfield pares. The beginning of this mass departure has already started, as Unit C staff have begun to leave for nearby school districts that provide better compensation. When educators that parents value may leave, who's to say that parents will choose Greenfield Public Schools over Mr. and Mrs. Paraprofessionals that has taken care of their child for the past several years? Greenfield paraprofessionals care. Greenfield paraprofessionals show up for their students. Greenfield paraprofessionals are an extension of these kiddos' families, which is a testament to the devotion and hard work of GPS IAs. In closing, I come forward tonight in this new year, in front of this new city council, and most notably in front of the new mayor, to assert that we, Unit C, are optimistic that this addition of the local government will do whatever they can within their power to get Unit C contracts funded from city-side funds responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lucas Martin.
Hello. I'm Lucas Martin. I live at 62 Haywood Street here in Greenfield, and I'm a teacher, a history teacher, at Greenfield High School. I'm also on the executive board of the GEA, the Teachers and Pares Unit Union. Before I even started, I'd like to thank the councilors and the mayor, who were able to attend our conference last week, meeting with students and hearing their voices on issues that matter to them. I just, I cannot emphasize how meaningful that is to them. And for those who weren't able to attend, we'll be doing it next year, so I will see all of you there. As for my comments, I'm going to start by saying that I wish I did not have to be here. I think I speak for many of the educators in the room, many in Greenfield, when I say that we are fairly tired of coming to meetings and begging to be treated as professionals worthy of a decent wage and a stable, transparent process to arrive at a decent wage. We are tired, we are frustrated, and frankly, a little embarrassed to have to do this, when everyone seems to agree, at least in theory, that what we do is fairly important. The last time I spoke, which was at a school committee meeting, I pointed out how students could leave Greenfield High School and work at a fast food restaurant for more than what many of our IAs make. I'd like to provide a bit of an update to that. Of course, the mass minimum wage has been increased, so those same students now make even more. But additionally, while many of our IAs are still paid $1,175 an hour, substitute IAs earn $13 an hour. Even students, working stage crew in our auditorium hired by Greenfield Public Schools, earn $12 an hour. So, that is students paid by the Greenfield Public Schools making a higher wage than educators paid by the Greenfield Public Schools. I don't think I'm going out on a limb to say this is starting to look bad. We can certainly point fingers and assign blame about meeting cancellations and a lack of quorum and what other, whatever other dysfunction may have led to this, but I want us all to be aware that this entire episode is sending strong signals about how this town values its schools and the educators who make those schools work. Signals that are picked up by parents, signals that are picked up by potential parents, myself included, signals that are picked up by employees and potential employees, and worst of all, signals that are picked up by students. As you consider this appropriation request from the mayor's office, please keep in mind that the first year of all municipal contracts has been paid for by the town since 2012 via a contract stabilization fund. And therefore, the school budget did not account for any such contract funding. Let's also keep in mind that that school budget was cut by over $1 million by the former mayor and only partially restored, though thankfully partially restored, by this council. Yet now, because of mismanagement, dysfunction, or whatever else we want to call it, the school department is expected to deplete reserves. Did that include my thanks to them? Because maybe the town, I feel like that shouldn't have counted, as well as what I'm saying now. I'll wrap up, it's not very long. Deplete its reserves to pay for a contract that should have been planned for well in advance and funded entirely by the town in its first year. However you decide to fund this contract, I would like to raise some serious questions going forward. First, if all reserves are depleted, exactly what happens when the schools incur unexpected special ed or other costs? Will there be a reduction in staff? Will positions be eliminated if there are no reserves to cover unexpected costs? What does this mean for future municipal contracts? You have nearly 200 teachers who are currently, or have been working under an expired contract for six months now. How will that contract be funded when it is finally negotiated? Also, what precedent does this set about how the contract stabilization fund is utilized in the future? Will it be available to some bargaining units and not others? At what level should this fund be replenished at the end of each financial year, fiscal year? Anyway, I appreciate the attention you give to this matter and don't envy the choices you have to make. Please pay the IAs the wages that they negotiated in good faith, that the school committee has ratified, and that they deserve. Please do so responsibly, and please can we try to avoid such a fiasco in the future? Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Witty. Okay. Next, we have Catherine Golub.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Golub from 34 Glenbrook Drive. First off, Happy New Year. Just a warm congratulations to all of the new councilors and to Vice President Wheeler and to President Stempel. And tonight, I'd like to ask you to do two things. Please, one, fully fund the instructional assistance contract, and, two, please send the Community Preservation Act to the ballot. First, in support of the instructional assistance, what we choose to invest our money in reflects what we value. The IAs do some of the most important work in our town, but they earn hardly enough to pay their rent. They deserve to be compensated for their hard work, and it is a shame that they currently are not. When the school committee put forward the plan to increase their wages by just $3, they negotiated in good faith and accepted, but as you know, the community hasn't followed suit. It should be a no-brainer that the city funds the contract and pays our IAs. Please do the right thing and do everything in your power to make sure that this contract is funded. Please demonstrate that you and our city value their hard work and the children they care for. Second, in support of the Community Preservation Act, this act will help expand affordable housing, which you heard tonight is so incredibly needed. And it will help protect our open spaces and historic sites, and it can finance the types of projects that our city most struggles to fund, like a new skate park and bicycle infrastructure. And what's more, it will raise the funds specifically from the people in our community who can afford it most. Greenfield residents need and deserve the support that this act offers. Please do the honorable thing and vote to send the CPA to the ballot. Thank you. I'm wishing all of you a very happy 2020. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next, we have Jean Squires.
Hello. I'm Jean Squires. I'm new to Greenfield, and I'm an institutional assistant at the Discovery School at Four Corners.
I can also say your address.
And I live at 15 Abbott Street, yes. And first of all, I'd like to request that the public comment be at the beginning of the meeting. I know about twice as many people who are here at the beginning, and I know about twice as many people who didn't come because of childcare and lack of childcare. So, it's very inaccessible to have a meeting and not have it, yeah, not have childcare available, and then also to make it an hour and a half, an hour and 55 minutes in that we get to do our public comment. So, just as a, you know, in my last town, we always did public comment at the beginning, and I feel like it's more accessible. So, thank you for that. I'd just like to share that I'm a new institutional assistant. I used to work supporting adults with developmental disabilities, and I did that for six years. So, by that time, I was making $5 or more per hour than I am now, or that, yeah, I took a $5 pay cut per hour, and I'm working less hours, six hours less. So, I'd like to go over my monthly bills with you, so you can understand what it looks like. So, my, I get paid every two weeks, my last paycheck. Take-home pay was $486.02. And I change diapers two to three times a day, usually BMs, and there's multiple behavior episodes, probably 10 a day, over 10 minutes. So, it's a very stressful position that I'm in. So, my monthly bills are $540. I share a house with three other people. One is 80, she's the landlady, the seven-year-old lady, and a man in his 50s. So, it's not optimal for me, but it's the only thing that I can afford at this wage. I actually can't afford it, you'll get to that. So, I do two donations to two nonprofits I believe in, Color Change and Bernie. And then I have a $37.19 phone bill. I have an $87.30 car insurance. I spend about $45 on gas. I have a car-efficient vehicle, and I don't drive, I walk to work. And then I spend about $200 on food. Actually, I spend more, but I just wrote that down to feel better about myself, and that's what I used to get on food stamps in the summer, but I don't get that. I get $16 on food stamps now, which I'm grateful for. So, if you add that all up, I get nine, I spend $937.49 before going to a conjurant or buying a coffee or anything. And then I, my income, it was $939. So, that's, I'm, that's $4.71 less. So, I just wanted to show that it's not extravagant. I'd like to foster a child, but I can't pay for an extra room, so that's changing my life path right now. And I'm going to have to not do this again next year unless the pay is more. And I was a new person, so I got a very diff, or, yeah, I've seen that the new IAs get very difficult assignments because we're the fools that take them and are suckered into them, and then we are not trained at all, and so it's very difficult. And thank you for your time. Everyone works hard, I'm sure, and thank you for your time again.
Thank you. Maria Burge.
It is green. All right. My name is Maria Burge, and a lot of you here know who I am, and I'll be, continue to be a pain in your side. It is such a travesty what I just heard from these folks, from GPS. I had come originally to say $150,000, are you kidding me? For the library? But I'm glad that the mayor put that on the back burner, and now I say, give the $150,000 to these folks behind me. Also, give the raise that is on the agenda that y'all are supposed to get, maybe, also to them. But really, I'm here to invite you to the Martin Luther King Weekend Events sponsored by the Stone Soup Cafe, run by Kristen Levitt. Please check the website for the schedule of events. Here we go. I can take my finger off? Wow, okay. There we go. An item on the schedule in this doc, is a documentary on the Poor People's Campaign. The Poor People's Campaign is a national organization that is organizing in 22 states. We must do more. National tour. The state organizers have chosen Greenfield as one of the stops on February 5th. We expect 300 to 400 attendees from surrounding communities. The MOR Tour is a movement that votes. MORE stands for mobilizing, organizing, registering, and educating. No one is paying attention to poor folks, to poverty. All the candidates that I have seen have not committed to tackling poverty. Everything here that you have heard so far is about poverty, not being able to meet our obligations. I rob Peter to pay Paul every month. I am a senior citizen, I'm a veteran, I'm on a fixed income, even though I had to take, had to go back to work. When Peter doesn't have any more money, where does that come from? Please consider funding these folks behind me. Come to this weekend events and join our campaign. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to, for those, it's February 5th for the Poor Person, Poor People's Campaign, if you missed it in her speech. Next, we have Rachel Cronin Townsend. Bless you.
Hello, everyone. I am Rachel Cronin Townsend. I live at 51 Madison Circle here in Greenfield. I have been teaching here in Greenfield since the last millennium. I, it's true. I have two children at the Greenfield High School. I teach at the middle school currently, and I could not do my job without the instructional assistance at the middle school. There is absolutely no way it would be possible. I need them, the students need them, we all need them. And the only thing I'm going to tell you right now is I am embarrassed. I am embarrassed to work for a town that does not pay the people that I work with the salary and the wage they need to live on. So, Town of Greenfield, I have skin in the game. I clearly have skin in the game. All of the instructional assistants behind me, and all of the ones who could not be here because this meeting is way too late, they have skin in the game, and we need to respect them. So, I'm asking you, please, pay them. Pay them not what they're worth, but at least more than what you're paying them now. Please and thank you.
Thank you. We're going to loop back around to our friends from other communities. Next is Ann Valentine.
I timed this last night, two minutes and 19 seconds. Don't start. Good evening. My name is Ann Valentine, and I live at Acro Avenue, Hetfield, Massachusetts. Thus, the reason why I'm going last. So, as I said, I'm Ann Valentine. I am the president of the GEA, as well as a 27-year veteran of teaching here at the Greenfield Public Schools. I stay because I love it, and I'm not leaving until I retire, unless I get fired, Jordana. So, over the past few months, you have heard countless stories of how our Unit C members have been affected by the contract negotiations falling, failing to pay our members. You have heard the frustrations, the anger, as well as the utter dumbfoundedness as to how this situation ended up being the way it has. how this situation ended up being the way it has. I know that you all understand and acknowledge the hardships that our Unit C members behind me have been enduring for the last couple of months, or have endured. We again come before you with many of the same concerns. I have struggled with this situation, as well as hoping to deliver a hopeful response and message to these members. I struggle with, as I'm sure you are as well, with how are our members going to get the so-deserved raises? Do we push for the school to take it out of their budget, as the previous mayor has suggested? Do we push to bankrupt our already tight school system? Or do we push the city side to pay for the raises? As we know, the Contract Stabilization Fund was created and used for just that, contracts. So, why was this drained as our Unit C negotiations was finalizing their collective bargaining this summer? Why were other city-side contracts funded and ours not? Should other departments heading into or already in contract negotiations be fearful that their contracts will not be funded? Should the DPW have to cut back on sanding the roads here in Greenfield because they might be asked to look into their budget that's contracted or may be contracted for? Should the police department have to cut their budget to pay for raises the next time they go to bargaining? Many people in this room are probably shaking their heads, of course not, that's not gonna happen. Then why does anyone think that it's okay to ask the school system to pay for the Unit C member raises? Our Unit C members deserve better. We teachers, as well as the children, the parents, depend on their support that they give to our students, that they give to us teachers. Our school cannot continue to function fluidly without their selfless dedication. Everyone here knows that a great community is one that has great schools. Please support the raises. Do what's right by our Unit C members. Thank you.
Next, we have Diane Jensen, and I'm Polish, so I'm gonna try this. Olszuski. How far off was I? Was I close?
Ochesci.
Ochesci, I was so far off. Next, we have Garth Brody.
Looks green. Hello, good evening. I'm Garth Brody. I live at 60 Avenue A, Turner's Falls. I'm an instructional assistant at GHS and a Unit C member. I don't have much new to add, and it's late, so I'll keep it brief. Most of what I want to say tonight has been said many times already by my colleagues and by other members of the community, so to reiterate what you've already heard, two things. One, fund the new Unit C contract fully and swiftly, so we can stop hemorrhaging staff and start providing our students with the safe, stable, high-quality learning environment they deserve. Two, fund that contract responsibly. Don't use money from the Special Education Stabilization Account. That's a bad plan, which would ultimately shortchange the same vulnerable student population currently being underserved as a result of staff shortages caused by unlivably low wages. That's all. Thank you.
And next, we have Laura Britton.
Hi, everyone. My name is Laura Britton. I live at 35 Ridgewood Terrace in East Hampton, and I'm just gonna keep it really quick. I'm an organizer with Jobs with Justice, Massachusetts, and I want to echo what was just last said. And I also want to say that thanks to the passage of the Student Opportunity Act, Greenfield is looking at about $1 million or more of Chapter 78 increases. That money was won on the backs of the people behind me, so I just think that we need to thank them for that. And with that extra money, I think we should look at responsibly funding the staff that we have in the room. I was at the MTA Winter Conference over the weekend, and I was in a room full of educators who all unanimously said that the money that was received in the Student Opportunity Act should be given to the students. That's what teachers say, and that's because teachers care about their students. But I'm here to say, we should also be funding retention, making sure we retain our good staff. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to thank everybody who came here, whether you spoke or not. You have the power to educate us. We're here to listen, and this is a long time coming tonight. This is a first reading, and we really, 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 I hope I'm speaking on behalf of my colleagues, really, really, really look forward to voting this in February. So, thank you for being here. At this time, finally, I will open the public hearing. False start last time. So, I will open the public hearing on the Police Department Heating System, as well as the Library Feasibility Study at this time, at 9:10 PM. And I don't see anybody who wrote down to speak on these, but I'll leave it open until we vote on these matters. Yep. And at this time, I'll ask Vice President Wheeler to read our second readings and the public hearing notice.
Notice of public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 15, 2020, at 7:00 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street. To receive public input on the following, appropriate $36,423 to replace heating system for the police department. Appropriate $150,000 for a library feasibility study. The City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, January 15, 2020, at 7:00 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163, the Greenfield City Council. City Council Second Reading, January 15, 2020. Appropriate $36,423 to replace heating system for the police department. Appropriate $150,000 for a library feasibility study.
And before we move forward to motions, orders, and resolutions, I want to, A, welcome all of our new councilors, and also kind of set forward some procedure for debate. So, I am going to do my best to adhere to the charter limits on debate. It's 9/11, and I'm sure we'll appreciate these limits moving forward throughout the year, and also I'll read them for you. So, just so you understand why, you might be raising your hand, and I'm not necessarily calling on you at this moment. So, no member shall speak more than twice to the same question unless I deem it appropriate. And I will always try to accommodate, to make sure that you have the opportunity to do so within reason. And I'm gonna give everybody the opportunity to speak before we all speak again. And then also, we have a lot of orders on here tonight that are to be taken from the table. And so, the way that that will work is we are actually going to read a motion to take the, to take the order from the table, and then we will move to a vote. That vote won't be on the motion, that vote will be on taking it from the table. And then we will vote, it's non-debatable, so we'll either take it from the table or not take it from the table, and then once it's taken from the table, then we're open to debate. If anyone has any questions? Okay, we'll move forward. That being said, Counselor Gwynn, the appointments.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 accepts the following appointment by the mayor to the Library Building Committee, Karen Benson, for a term to expire when the project is complete.
Discussion.
This received a positive unanimous recommendation from appointments and ordinances.
Thank you very much. No discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Counselor Gwynn.
Sorry.
No worries, we're all getting used to these things.
I'm getting used to the, yeah. I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 accepts the following reappointment by the mayor to the Greenfield Retirement Board, Betty Rice, for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2022.
Motion's been made, second report from committee.
This motion did not come before appointments and ordinances because it was a time-sensitive appointment that would expire before we had time to consider it, so the first consideration would be here as we put it on the agenda at chairs.
Great, thank you very much. With that being said, any discussion on the appointment of Betty Rice to the retirement board? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absention? Motion passes. Vice President Wheeler.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table Order Number FY 20-62. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, and in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 12B, ordered that the City Council approve a 20-year term for the Millbrook Wellfield Solar Project with GTR Greenfield Millbrook Solar LLC, which was tabled at the November 20, 2019 City Council Meeting.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Okay, and so just to reiterate, a vote yes is to take from the table, and debate, a vote no is to leave it on the table until a date to be defined. So, we'll go ahead and take our vote. All those in favor of taking from the table?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? All right, it is now on the table. Discussion. Vice President Wheeler.
Just report from the committee, Ways and Means gave a unanimous positive recommendation on this item.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. Counselor Wheeler, Vice President Wheeler.
The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, and in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 12B, ordered that the City Council approve a five-year contract with the option of two five-year extensions for the disposal of recyclables between the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, the City of Greenfield as a dual-stream designated community, and WM Recycle America LLC.
Motion's been made, so this is not a table, so the motion is on the table to discuss. And at this point, I'll welcome any discussion. Vice President Wheeler.
Report from committee, again, Ways and Means gave this a unanimous positive recommendation, and we would note, as Director Warner said, this must be signed by the end of the month.
Noted. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. Vice President Wheeler.
The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, and in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 12B, ordered that the City Council approve a five-year contractual term for school transportation services with FM Kuzmeskus Inc.
Do I hear a second? Report from committee.
This received a unanimous positive recommendation, although we were concerned that we received the contract after it had already taken effect. Hopefully, that was just an oversight, it won't happen again.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. Vice President Wheeler.
The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table Order Number FY 20-009. The sum of $460,000 be appropriated for the replacement of the heating system in Green River Schools. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $460,000 pursuant to MGL Chapter 44 or any other enabling statute, and the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept, and expend any federal and/or state grants or bond premiums available for this project to be used to reduce the appropriation. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects, which was tabled at the July 17, 2019 City Council Meeting.
Okay, so this is one of those that it's, this vote is to take from the table, so yes, take it from the table, no is leave it there. So, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? We're on the table. Report from committee.
This, I believe, due to time constraints, did not receive a recommendation from Ways and Means, and did not make it back, so there is no recommendation, although, if I may, being that I have the floor, I am certainly in support personally of funding this project.
Thank you, Vice President Wheeler. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. Next, we have our zoning ordinances, Counselor Dolan, page 112.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table Order Number FY 20-078. Amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, zoning article four, use regulations, and section 4.6, health service district, as follows. Add the existing use category municipal or commercial parking lot or garage as a use allowed by special permit from the zoning board of appeals within the H district. Currently, this use is not allowed within the H district. And further, amend the table of contents and index of the code, and further, that non-substantive change to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield, which was tabled at the December 18, 2019 City Council Meeting.
Do I hear a second? Thank you. So, once again, this is one of these coming from the table, but I want to provide a little background on these. So, these were tabled at our, was it December, December meeting, due to not really understanding if splitting them into pieces was a substantive change. And what would happen if it was a substantive change is that the orders would need to be re-initiated as such. What we learned is that splitting zoning ordinances is actually a recommended thing to do, and it is not a substantive change. So, the reason it was tabled, we were just being a little overly cautious. So, we're hearing these today in the hopes that we'll take them from the table and then make a decision and move them forward. Any questions? Seeing none. This vote is to take it from the table. So, again, yes, take it, no, leaves it on the table, and we'll vote. All those in favor of taking from the table?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? All right, we're on the table. Oh, one absenction from Counselor Elmer. All right, so we're on the table. Counselor Dolan, report from committee, because you served on EDC, you can provide that report for us.
So, this whole package of zoning amendments that came from the planning board received a unanimous positive from EDC. We had a public hearing that was sparsely attended, we only got one comment, which was forwarded to the council.
Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Gilmore.
So, a general question on this whole batch, and also one specific to this particular one that we're looking at right now. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, so, on the whole batch, my understanding is, I think there were some amendments that were made by the planning board, and those have already been incorporated, so we're voting on this as amended, correct?
Correct, and the change that was initiated by the planning board was not substant, sub, I can't get the word, substantive either, so we're voting on it as amended. The change that the planning board, based on our discussion at this joint public hearing, was, I think we have a goal of trying to make any zoning amendments be more evergreen, and technology is one of those things that sometimes prevents ordinances and zoning from being evergreen. And so, if I remember correctly, and Counselor Dolan or Counselor Disorder can, can correct me if I'm wrong, was we were, we kind of stripped away some language about vending machines to make them, I guess, we've seen the evolution of vending machines. vending machines to make them, I guess, we've seen the evolution of vending machines, um, and one example was, uh, a former counselor, Mass, was like, well, I might use, uh, vending machines in the future to sell, uh, movie tickets, or, and, and whatever. So by stripping away some language, the ordinance and the amendments are now more evergreen, and so that's, that's what that change was.
And then my question about this specific one is, we're talking about a parking garage in, um, the H District, which I believe is over by the hospital and those, um, that area on High Street where we have the, like Tapestry Health and all those, um, is, is there some desire to build a parking garage there, or we just want it to be an option in case the hospital needs to expand their parking?
I'm going to, uh, defer that question actually to Counselor Disorder because she served on the committee who formed this, if, if you would like to, uh, if you know or would like to, um, provide some background.
We had a used committee that looked at this for a year, and then the planning board worked on it. Everything that's recommended were things that there was a possibility that that might be needed in that particular area. Or there might be some interest in it.
We're just, um, doing our homework over here regarding, so, we mentioned the amendment made by the planning board based on a public hearing, and so we just need to make sure that we amend that specific, um, order on the floor tonight to then move that forward as amended, um, so. Counselor Hirschfeld.
On page, uh, I guess it's page, uh, twenty-three, uh, one hundred and twenty-three and one hundred and twenty-four, uh, I take it the planning, um, planning board, uh, recommendations are going to be added to that, those two, because that's where the kiosk, uh, concerning the vending machines with, um, uh, cigarettes and, and selling, uh, lottery tickets, so, even though it's not in the, uh, the packet, change, it's being changed.
Right, and so that roots back to, we have to amend that on the floor, so we're, so we're passing forward that amended language. Thank you for your point of order. Feedback always welcome. All right, so, um, that being said, discussion on this specific order here, Health Service District, did that answer your question? Okay, any other questions? Discussion. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, you're fine. Any abscensions? Seeing none, motion passes. Counselor Dolan, uh, page one-thirteen.
Practice my fast reading tonight. Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY, uh, twenty dash zero-seven-nine, amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter two-hundred, zoning, Article four, use regulations, Section four-point-seven, Central Commercial District, as follows. Add a new use maker space as a use allowed by right within the CC District. Add a new use craft workshop and light assembly with retail component as a use allowed by right within the CC District. Add a new use automated vending kiosks as a use listed within existing number sixteen under uses allowed by right, and add the existing use category retail sales incidental to a permitted use or use allowed by special permit as a use allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Currently, this use is allowed, allowed within the Central, the CC District. And further, amend the table of contents and index of the code, and further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the City of Greenfield, which was tabled at the December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, city council meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made, second. Um, I, I think your one report from committee stands for, for all, um, any discussion on this specific order? Sure. Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm, I'm focusing on making sure that we amend language. Um, so this vote, thank you, Counselor Gilmore, this vote will be taking this from the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abscensions? All right, we're on the table. Um, report from committee has been completed, uh, discussion on this specific order. Vice President Wheeler.
I just want to commend the planning board in general for a comprehensive, um, well-informed, deliberation period over these, um, and I generally support all of them despite my last vote, and I certainly support this one, which I think, um, adds a lot of mixed use in a, in a really thoughtful way.
Thank you, and I, I certainly second that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abscensions. Motion passes. Uh, Counselor Dolan, page one-fifteen.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY twenty dash zero-eight-zero, amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter two-hundred, zoning, Article four, use regulations, Section four-point-eight, limited commercial district, uh, Section four-point-nine, general commercial district, as follows. Add a new use maker space as a la- use allowed by right within the LC and GC districts. Add a new use craft workshop and light assembly with retail component as a use allowed by right with the, within the LC and GC districts. Add a new use automated vending kiosks as a use listed within existing number twenty-two under uses allowed by right in Section two-hundred dash, uh, four-point-eight, limited commercial. Add a new use automated vending kiosks as a use listed within existing number twenty-three under uses allowed by right in Section two-hundred, two-hundred dash four-point-nine, general commercial, and add the existing use category mixed residential business uses as a use allowed by right within both the LC and GC districts. Currently, this use is only allowed by special permit in these districts. Add the existing use category sale, leasing, repair, and servicing of new and used motor vehicles with a Class One Motor Vehicles License issued by the Town of Greenfield as a use allowed by special permit within both the LC and GC districts. Currently, this use is only allowed by special permit within the CC District. Amend the existing use category self-storage from a use allowed by right within the LC District to use allowed by special permit. Add the existing use category retail sales incidental to a permitted use or use allowed by special permit as a use allowed by right within the LC and GC districts. Currently, this use is not allowed within the LC and GC districts. And further, amend the table of contents and index of the code, and further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the City of Greenfield, which was tabled at the December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, city council meeting.
Second.
Amazing, okay, so, um, we're gonna pause to make sure that everybody, if they so wish, is on page one-sixteen in the packet.
Right.
Take a little pause.
Mm-hmm.
And then I will also do my blurb of this is to take it from the table. All right, um, so, yes, we're gonna vote to take this from the table, yes is taking it, no is leaving it, and here we go, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abscensions? All right, so we are on the table. Discussion. No discussion, I'm, this is the chunk of this work that most excites me, we have maker spaces thriving in our downtown, I can't tell you how many times, uh, people on the street, family, friends, my dad, are always asking like, what are we gonna do with downtown? And maker spaces are a, a huge portion of, of what will make our downtown viable. We've had maker spaces in existence in our downtown for years without really a real zoned place, home for them to go. And I just had this conversation with someone recently, and maker spaces used to be in our downtown, you used to go downtown to get your shoes, to, to get your suits, um, and then in the seventies, they went away, they went to the outskirts of town because that's where we wanted to go, we wanted the Sears and the J.C. Penney's downtown, and now we're seeing a resurgence of these maker spaces, and I couldn't be more excited to see what I call the Renaissance of Greenfield, and our ability and our history of making things for people. Um, so, super excited about this one, um, I will stop talking, I know we have a lot more work to do, um, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sure.
We're talking about, uh, motor vehicle sales downtown?
The districts are, the limited commercial district, so that's LC, general commercial district, GC, and so that is not necessarily downtown, um, but you'll think of Federal Street as well, um, and maker space certainly downtown. Uh, I think Counselor Disorder can speak to this more clearly than I can.
Right, that's something, you know, with the limited commercial is on Federal Street, the orange, okay? Okay, and, um, central commercial, cent- central commercial and your, is, in the downtown area? You have, you, we, I think you had your zoning, zoning map out, so, and your question was?
Well, we're committing, right now, if you wanted to put a car lot in downtown, and what this is saying, don't, do I understand that?
So I, correction, so maker space is included in all of these entities, and so I just wanted to bring to the forefront that I'm excited about the maker space. It's, if you look at each individual district, maker space is the first and fir-, so I was confusing you. Um, so I think what Counselor Disorder is trying to say, that the general commer-, the districts listed here, um, are not necessarily downtown in this particular order.
Look, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and sale, and service, and, 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 and,
Correct, sorry, I didn't mean to elaborate and, and make it seem like this one was speaking to the downtown, um, but I just wanted to take a moment to speak about my enthusiasm for the maker space, so I, I apologize, Counselor Elmer, I might have confused you. Any other questions or discussion? Counselor Dolan?
I just wanted to address the point, I share your concern. Currently, this kind of car dealership is only allowed downtown by special permit, so the districts that we're talking about right now are kind of the commercial areas that have developed that are not downtown, so this is expanding, um, places where those could go that are not taking up downtown real estate, uh, and you're correct, they will be allowed in all three districts, but only with a special permit and with that level of oversight.
And just to have that in the microphone, that's the ZBA, the zoning board of appeals. Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yeah, I think next time, uh, we get into this, it would be good if we could get a zoning map, uh, colored zoning map, uh, included, um, yeah, I think would help us.
He has one. Did you bring your zoning map? It's online. He hadn't brought it up.
That's all right, I'm, I'm just saying in the future.
Counselor Gilmore.
So I don't know if, where it falls on the map, because, you know, that's a very, very small map of Greenfield, but we already do have one down on Main Street, and it's kind of like, as you're leaving, you know, the downtown area and getting closer to ninety-one, I don't know where that falls as far as like what districts are, but we already do have that, so I don't, um, I don't think that this is like a, a very new use, and I don't see a lot of them popping up just because of, you know, competition, but, so I don't know if that's something that addresses any of your fears at all?
Did you?
I was just gonna address the, um, special permit, different than the, but in this particular case, the, the DDA would, uh, it's not always the DDA gives special permits, in this case it would be, um, and I think my recollection was that, um, we were trying to be very consistent about our commercial districts, so, um, and Counselor Dolan, I think wants to have just addressed this, it is, it would be better if whatever new auto leadership, and I can't imagine these days, wanted to move into town, that they had the options of being on the outer skirts of retail sections, um, to do that versus taking up downtown, but nevertheless, it was being consistent, because we're like allowing, um, by, 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 by,
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, we will, um, take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abscensions. Counselor Elmer will abstain. Counselor Dolan, page one-seventeen.
If you like maker spaces, you'll like this one. Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY twenty dash zero-eight-one, amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter two-hundred, zoning, Article four, use regulations, Section four-ten, four-dot, four-point-ten, uh, office district, as follows. Add a new use maker space as a use allowed by right within the O District. Add a new use craft workshop and light assembly with retail component as a use allowed by right within the O District. Add the existing use category mixed residential business uses as allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals within the O District. Currently, this use is not allowed within the O District. And add the existing use category retail sales incidental to a permitted use or a use allowed by special permit as a use allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Currently, this use is not allowed within the O District. And further, amend the table of contents and index of the code, and further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the City of Greenfield, which was tabled at the December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, city council meeting.
Uh, thank you, and so this is a vote to take from the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abscensions? We're on the table. Discussion. Say, oop, Counselor Elmer.
I can't find the O District on his map.
Counselor Dolan.
It's dark green in the bottom left corner if you're looking at the ma-, if you have a color map.
No, never apologize for asking a question. Uh, further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abscensions. Motion passes. Counselor Dolan, page one-nineteen.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY twenty dash zero-eight-two, amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter two-hundred, zoning, Article four, use regulations, Section four, uh, point-one-one, general industry district, uh, and S four-point-one-two, planned industry district, as follows. Add the existing use category greenhouse, nursery, or farm set, where fifty percent or more of the products for sale have been produced on the premises as a use allowed by right within the PI District. To be consistent with MGL Chapter forty A, Section three, add the existing use category bus or railroad passenger terminal or taxi dispatch as a use allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals within the GI District. Currently, it is not allowed within the GI District. Add the existing use category sale or leasing of most motor vehicles, boats, farm implements, campers, or other vehicles or heavy equipment as a use allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals within the GI District. Currently, this is a use not e-, allow, currently, this use is not allowed within the GI District. Add the existing use category sale, leasing, repair, and servicing of new and used motor vehicles with a Class One Motor Vehicle License issued by the Town of Greenfield to, to a, as a use allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals within the GI District. Currently, this use is not allowed within the GI District. Add the existing use category service and repair shops for appliance, small equipment business, and consumer products as a use allowed by a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals within the GI District. Currently, this use is not allowed within the GI District. Add a new use maker space as a use allowed by right within the GI and PI Districts. Add a new use craft workshop and light assembly with retail component as a use allowed by right within the GI and PI Districts. Add a new use automated vending kiosks as a use listed within existing number seventeen under uses allowed by right within the GI District. Add a new use automated vending kiosks as a use listed within existing number fifteen under uses allowed by right within the PI District. Add the existing use category mixed residential business uses as a use allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals within the GI District. Currently, this use is not allowed within the GI District. Remove the existing use category hotel, motel, or inn as a use allowed by special permit within the GI District. Remove the existing use category conference center as a use allowed by special permit within the GI District. Add the existing use category multifamily dwelling in accordance with Section two-hundred dash seven-point-two as a use allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals within the GI District. Currently, this use is not allowed within the GI District. Add the existing use categories accessory dwelling unit within, accessory dwelling unit attached, and accessory dwelling unit detached as uses allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals within the GI District. Currently, these uses are not allowed within the GI District. Add the existing use category retail establishment as a use allowed by right within the GI District. Currently, this use is not allowed within the GI District. And add the existing food use category restaurant, bar, or lounge for su-, serving food or drinks primarily within the building. the building as a use allowed by right within the GI district. Currently, this use is not allowed within the GI district, and further amends the table of contents, contents and index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield, which was tabled at the December 18th, 2019 city council meeting.
All right. So this is to take from the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? We're on the table. Counselor Dolan, you're doing great. Discussion, Counselor Disorder?
This one, this one represents the most significant changes, just so everyone's aware of that. I'm just going to start from the beginning on this. The GI district, this is GI and PI and planned industrial. The general industrial is the gray on your zoning map, for those of you who are looking. There are a lot of things that are already happening there that we added in as allowed. They were, the things that are already in existence would have been grandfathered in, and so we were adding many of them. There's also, in the GI district, there's an enormous amount, there are businesses that were leaving, Dumont, Lefty's Pub, and a lot of open space, a lot of potential for development. So, let's see, the bus, a railroad passenger, there's a taxi station down there, there's a taxi station down by where Jim's Tree Service is currently located. And we actually did some talking with neighbors in that district, and they were happy with the changes that were coming forward. The Lefty's that was given a poor license actually developed into a pub that was very well-liked by all of the neighbors that were down there, and asking many of them, they would be very happy to have those things come into existence. So, but I just wanted you to be aware that they were the most significant. We had public hearing on it, and, and neighbors that were asked, and if anybody had any more questions about it, I'll let you ask.
I appreciate your expertise being brought to this board, so thank you, Counselor Disorder. Any further discussion, Counselor Gilmore?
I have a question, and this might be a good one for Counselor Disorder to answer. But I remember when I first started on the city council, in the first couple of months, I remember talking, I believe to MJ Adams, about mixed-use zoning, and she was saying that we needed to protect this area because we have such little land that can be used in this way. So I wonder why we're expanding the uses if we're worried about protecting it. And I mean, I might just be misinterpreting how these changes all work together as part of the whole, and I would, if anybody on the council has any insight, I would really appreciate it.
I'm going to punch that to Counselor Disorder.
So, you're correct that we don't have that much general industrial land, and the, we talked at great length about that. The, there are no great big lots of land there for a huge industry to take off, and so we just were adding things, because some of the things, we're sort of letting the market develop. There are small businesses that were there, like a craft brewery, and not something that was big enough for, like a, like a huge industry to take off. Furthermore, that whole zone is, is a very mixed zone, and that was one of the reasons to add that to it. Housing is probably maybe 60 to 70% of it, and there are already two families, multifamilies, et cetera, in that area, so we really weren't adding something to the housing part that wasn't already there, but we were naming it.
Vice President Wheeler?
I just want to say that I think if this passes, this would be one of the most consequential things to pass in the time that I've been on council. I think, right now, East Hampton is probably experiencing greater commercial growth than any surrounding city or town, and that growth started with the rehabilitation of abandoned factory building, the Eastworks building in the mid-'90s. And Greenfield does have two or three factory buildings, one of, at least one of which is within the GI, and, and I think that there's a, the Eastworks is a model for how a formerly industrial space can be changed in, into a mixed-use hub of the 21st century, and I think that these changes could begin to allow for that here.
Counselor Dolan?
Just to follow up, I certainly don't want to speak for Director Adams, but I feel like I understand the, the purpose behind this and how it fits into the larger strategy. You're correct that we do not have a lot of industrial land. What's in most of our GI is not land, it's buildings. It's already been developed, it was developed before the zoning ordinance went into place. And currently, the zoning the way it stands limits the owners of those buildings from doing much with them, because it has to be for a very, for a limited range of industrial purposes. So this is pursuing that goal of mixed use, which was in the housing presentation that we saw. GI is obviously going to have a different makeup long-term than Central Commercial, but overall, in our already-developed areas, we want to focus on various kinds of mixed use that's appropriate for that area, and I feel like this pursues that.
And I, I agree. I came out pretty hard in, in support and of protecting industrial space when we had our, I guess our last big zoning in, in 2019 discussion, and I did a lot of research even after that, and, and I do agree with your sentiment of, it's, it's protecting the, the developable, bigger spaces of land for industry, but even with the research I've done and the conversations I've had with not just regional, but state and federal economic development people, Smart, Smart Growth USA, when they were here for the ozone conversation. What I've learned is that it's really important to revert back to the mixed use in, in the pockets, that the GI is on the, I guess, the outskirts of our CC district, and so it's the infill, and, and everybody can play nicely, and it's an ecosystem of commerce, more so than just retail. And so what I learned a lot from Smart Growth USA was the '70s and they, what they called the Euclidean zoning mindset, where residents live here, you, you grocery shop and shop for your clothes here, and you work here, but everything's left, right? And so what's left are the people, and how we move and, and do commerce is different now, and so we kind of need to accommodate that way of thinking, that, again, it's that Renaissance thinking. It's not a new way of thinking, it's actually reverting back to how things used to be in the downtown where people didn't have cars. They, they lived, worked, and shopped in the same place, because the car kind of changed zoning, but now we're moving backwards. And so I'm in support of these mixed zoning, knowing that we're still, and the mayor can probably echo this, bigger ideas for developable land that we have left. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. All right. So this is, this is the one where to properly put forward, we have to consider the amendments that were put forth by the planning board after our joint public hearing. So that being said, we will take from the table. I will then move on from there. So, all those in favor of taking the, oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
About to let me off the hook. Move the DIP order that the Greenfield City Council take from the table, order number FY 20-083, amend the zoning ordinance, chapter 200 zoning, article 2, definitions, and section 2.1, terms and words as follows. Craft workshop and light assembly with related retail, a shop that sells goods made by hand such as decorative objects, clothing, and household tools, to include the materials and tools used for making such goods. Light industry and manufacturing, a section of an economy's secondary industry characterized by less capital-intensive, more labor-intensive operations for the production of small goods. Products made by, in economies, light industry tend to be targeted toward end consumers rather than other businesses. Maker Space, an enterprise that provides technology, equipment, and educational opportunities to the public. They are typically funded by membership fees or through affiliates, affiliations with external organizations such as universities, for-profit companies, nonprofit organizations, and municipalities, and allow members to design, prototype, and manufacture items using tools that would otherwise be inaccessible or unaffordable. Automated vending kiosk, an automated machine that provides items such as snacks, beverages, cigarettes, lottery tickets, and other goods to consumers after money a credit card or specially-designed card is inserted into the machine. Amend the existing definition of retail business so that it includes internet retail sales. Retail establishment, premises used for the retail sale of goods for personal or business use to include internet retail sales, and also premises used for personal business or household services, does not include retail businesses elsewhere defined or permanent or ongoing tag yard, garage, or barn sales. And further amends the table of contents and index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield, which was tabled at the December 18th, 2019 city council meeting.
Now, we will vote to take from the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? All right. So the motion's on the table. This is, so we have to redefine based on the planning board's amendments. So what I would like for at this time is for somebody, perhaps Counselor Dolan, to move to amend by inserting the language for the automating vending kiosk located on page 125.
So moved.
Is that efficient? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion?
Now you need to vote the motion.
Okay. So, and, and just to slow us down a little bit, so that amended the language for the definition of the kiosks. So as I mentioned before, we stripped some of the language down to make the definition more evergreen. Now that that amendment has been made, we can discuss the order as amended. Discussion, please.
Do we vote on the amendment?
We just did.
The change, we voted on?
Yes, we did, yep. And so, and thank you, and so that's why it's helpful to slow down, so I'll slow down. So, we voted to take from the table, and then considering the language put forward by the planning board about the vending kiosks, so then we, Counselor Dolan, moved to amend the language. And so what happened was I, I said someone needs to move this language, and then Counselor Dolan shorthanded it, because he has just been reading all night long, and he said so moved. Does that make sense? Great. All right. So the, the motion's on the table, it's, the language for the kiosks has been amended, and now we are discussing the motion as amended. Seeing no discussion, we will move to vote on the motion as amended, particularly the vending kiosks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. All right. So Counselor Dolan?
And just a question, do I just read the part on page 126? Move the DIP order that the Greenfield City Council take from the table, order number FY 20-071, hereby initiates the following zone change in accordance with MGLC, MGL, chapter 40A, section 5, amend the Greenfield zoning ordinance, chapter 200 zoning, article 5, dimensional regulations, section 5.2, table of dimensional requirements, article 6, general regulations, section 6.5, parking requirements, article 2, definitions, section 2.1, terms and words, article 8, administration, section 8.4, site plan review and approval, article 7, special regulations, section 7.18, accessory dwelling units, article 4, use regulations, section 4.1, application of use regulations, section 4.2, rural residential district, section 4.3, suburban residential district, section 4.4, urban residential district, section 4.5, semi-residential districts, section 4.6, health service district, section 4.7, central commercial district, section 4.8, limited commercial district, section 4.9, general commercial district, section 4.11, general industry district, section 4.17, planned unit development overlay district as attached, and further amends the table of the, table of contents and index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield, which was tabled at the December 18th, 2019 city council meeting.
Motion's been made second. Again, this vote is to take from the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? All right. So this has been taken. Counselor Gwyn abstains. All right. So this motion, it passes. This motion's on the table. So, at this point, I'm going to ask Vice President Wheeler to amend the motion, and then we'll discuss it afterward.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend this into separate orders according to what's in the packet. Is that correct, Clerk Scott? Or I can, I can read it out, but?
Or, excuse me, handout, according to what's in the handout. Is, was there a handout?
Yes. Everyone? Yes. The motion was tabled, ooh, sorry. So the motion was tabled at the last meeting because the four proposed amendments by Counselor Dolan and Wheeler were to be initiated in a batch. Since then, we've learned that zoning should not be initiated in a batch. It was laid on the table in the format of a batch. Now, the intention of Counselor Wheeler is to separate the one motion into four separate motions to initiate them individually. All of the counselors were given the four motions. They were in front of your seats earlier tonight, and so Counselor Wheeler would need to make a motion to divide the one motion that is currently on the floor into four separate motions. A vote would need to be taken on that motion to divide, and then the four motions would be voted individually.
Now it's your turn.
Do you, okay, I will, motion to divide the, the order taken from the table into orders number FY 20-105-106-107 and -104.
Motion's been made second. Pause. I saw Counselor Gwyn's hand go up.
I just kind of want to clarify, there are a few things for me, not part of any procedure or anything. These, this is different than what we've been doing so far. This is to initiate these. These haven't been sent to planning or zoning or anything. This is just for discussion, correct? Because I, I just don't want to put, the other ones were vetted and worked on and we're coming back for vote. This hasn't gone anywhere yet, correct? Well, I just want to be sure.
And that's a good pause. And so, yes, so, the previous motions, those were submitted by the planning board, they went through a public hearing process, or we'll even backtrack, so they were initiated previously at council in 2019, which sent them to a joint public hearing between EDC and the planning board. The recommendation was a positive unanimous from both boards, and then sent back to us to make into law. But now, with these zoning amendments, these are But now, with these zoning amendments, these are to be initiated to start that process all over again. And so, what will happen after these are initiated is they will go to the joint public hearing process once again for discussion, debate, amendments, and then whatever happens at that meeting will choose its own adventure. So, if substantive changes happen to what we initiate, then we must initiate again. And if no substantive changes happen, then it comes back to us to make into law. Does that make sense? Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yeah, so these wouldn't go back to, wouldn't go to the planning board?
They would, as a part of a joint public hearing with Economic Development Committee. Good question, though, good question. Counselor Disorder.
And if any substantive changes are made to any of these, isn't there a time period under which we can't take them up again?
There is a time period that starts as soon as we initiate this. Counselor Dolan.
I don't, it's not, in my understanding, like voting something down.
Mm-hmm.
If substantive changes are made, they have to be withdrawn and reintroduced. That's my understanding of the process. But no, there's no nine-month waiting period or anything like that.
Was that your question, Counselor Disorder?
It was, and I thought I remembered that, that if a, if a zoning issue actually is defeated, I just remember this from sitting here as a member sitting on that side, that it actually cannot be taken up again for, I think, I thought it was two years.
So, so substantive changes is different than voting down?
Yes.
And so, substantive changes will not, will not set it on a path to not be heard again for two years. A substantive change is a part of the, is it 60 days to act? And so, once it's initiated, but then that strikes me to a question of, does a substantive change that needs to be re-initiated, does that restart the 60 days? I think it does, yeah. So, so if it's, say, we initiate this, and at the joint public hearing, they send it forward, and then we as a council vote it down, we vote no, then it can't be heard again this, in its format for another two years? And then, so say, the planning board and the, and the EDC have a joint public hearing, and we decide to strike one paragraph, that's a substantive change, that would need to be re-initiated at council and then go through the process again, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't prevent it from being heard in time. And this is all off the top of my head, from what I remember. I haven't actually experienced any of this happening, so we can certainly check and move forward, but just for tonight, we're initiating.
Point of information, this vote is merely to separate?
Yeah.
The four different orders, then, might may all speak a little bit.
Sure, so, so let's start there. It's been moved and seconded to split the order into four separate orders. So, your vote is, a vote yes is to split, a vote no is to leave it as is. Does anyone have any questions? We'll vote. So, all those in favor of splitting this order into four separate orders? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? All right. So, now we have four separate orders, which the clerk passed out to us at the start of this meeting. And in order to initiate, we will read each individual order separately. Welcome to your first meeting of the Greenfield City Council, new counselors. You're going to be all set for the rest of the year. So, now we read each separate order to initiate, yep, one by one.
Just the cover page, correct?
Correct. Each individual one, yes, correct.
Move that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield hereby initiates the following zoning change in accordance with MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 5. Amend zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, regulations related to accessory dwelling units by amending the following sections and as indicated on the attached exhibit 200...
I just want to, we're on 104 for everybody.
Yes.
Does everybody have 104? Okay, continue.
200-2.1, terms and words, 200-8.4, site plan review and approval, 200-7.8, accessory dwelling units, Article 4, use regulations, 200-4.12, 200-4.17, Chapter 200, schedule of uses, 200-4.2, rural residential district, 200-4.3, suburban residential district, 200-4.4, urban residential district, 200-4.5, semi-residential district, 200-4.8, limited commercial district, 200-4.11, general industry district, 200-4.6, health services district, 200-4.7, central commercial district, 200-4.9, general commercial district, and further, amends the table of contents and index of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield.
Motion's been made second. Discussion, again, this is to initiate, not vote into law. Counselor Gwynn.
So, you said it would go off for a joint?
Public hearing, yep.
Public hearing and such. Is it also our recommendation to send it to somewhere besides planning? Does it go to zoning? I mean, where, where does this go to make sure that we're following, you know, both, you know, that we're following a policy that's going to, you know, pass zoning and planning? Is, I just don't want to send it to one entity. I'd like to get the opinion of both sides.
Yes, and so that, so it will go to a joint public hearing, and what that means is that the Economic Development Committee of the Greenfield City Council, as well as the Greenfield Planning Board, have one joint meeting. Essentially, both bodies are acting independently, but we're meeting on the same date to discuss the ordinances together. Counselor Dolan.
Yes, so, public hearings from the planning board and the Economic Development Committee are mandated. It's our due diligence to reach out to everyone we possibly can for feedback. We've already gotten some from the building inspector and several other town departments that we can share. But yes, this is supposed to be a process of rigorously vetting this language and teasing out all of the consequences.
Counselor Elmer.
Yeah, first of all, I'm finding it very hard to make sense of this. This is complicated and substantive stuff. I mean, we're talking about shrinking the size of a building by a factor of four. And I have a lot of faith in the guys who put it forward, but I want to, they're not town planners. And I, and I, this really does need vetting at a level of expertise that we don't have, I think.
Yep. Vice President Wheeler.
The, I'm going to speak to all four, but this also does apply to the ADU one that we're discussing right now. These have been submitted after a, I would say, careful process of deliberation between Counselor Dolan and I that has included at least three planning board meetings where we solicited input and feedback unofficially from the planning board, as well as Director Many of these are a response to the report that you heard earlier from the Greenfield Affordable Housing Project. They were, the zone changes were initiated, were, excuse me, not initiated, but we began talking about them after the report was released in November, because we wanted to tackle it while it was fresh. We are, in fact, not professional planners, but I attend Smart Growth forums, I read book after book, and I think that in collaboration with the planning board, we can, in fact, move Greenfield zoning into the 21st century.
Further discussion. Counselor Gilmore.
I also just wanted to point out that what we're voting on tonight is to initiate that sort of feedback that we're going to be getting, so...
Yeah, and I want to make, make it clear that because we're initiating a piece here tonight, it doesn't mean that it can't be chopped, changed, amended. We're just beginning the process. Someone's raising their hand, saying, you know what, this zoning should be looked at, and here's a suggestion for that zoning based on the research I've done. And so, that's our hope through the joint meeting process, that this will be on their agenda, our colleagues at the planning board will be on their agenda, they'll be, they'll be doing their own independent research, as well will the council. So, this is just a start, and what comes to us after that process might be the same, or it might be completely different, but it's, I think it's our, it's all of our goal to be comfortable with what we're putting forward, because zoning should be taken seriously. So, thank you for raising that thought, Counselor Elmer. Counselor Dolan.
I just want to speak to that because I'm sympathetic. I've spent the last two years trying to understand the zoning ordinance and trying to understand all of the various ripple effects that it has in the community. I would emphasize that we have a city planner, and ultimately, he is only there in an advisory capacity. It's the planning board and the council that are the authorities on zoning in this, in this town. And so, it is challenging, as it may be incumbent upon all of us to understand what is, what the consequences of these zoning changes are, and to understand the consequences of not making zoning changes. What we're seeing, and if you look at Smart Growth and what a number of other organizations are, the research that they're publishing, is the zoning in Massachusetts specifically has not kept up with the actual patterns of living. Our towns are not designed in the way that people want them to be because the zoning is, in many cases, standing in the way. So, there are consequences to making changes, for sure. I want to emphasize for everybody, there are also consequences for not making changes. We want a 21st century zoning ordinance.
Follow-up, Counselor Elmer.
I'm just, I'm, with, with changes this big, I think there's a certain level of public education that's going to have to happen, too. Otherwise, we could see what happened with the library, where, you know, it's about to happen, and suddenly people see all the problems, and we have a wave of protest against something that was well thought out. And so, I think we're going to have to bring the town along with us as we move this forward.
Agreed, and I think that's kind of why each of us either represent an at-large seat or represent our, our section of the community, although I know that, although if you're a precinct counselor, you still represent everybody, at least that was my opinion as a precinct counselor. But that's kind of our role, is to be those, those entities in the community, saying, you know what, this is coming before us, we want your opinion, we want you to know more about it and why, why this has come before us. And so, absolutely, and with the joint public hearing process, Counselor Dolan spoke to how the public really didn't attend that, although we were talking about it at several meetings before that. So, yeah, it will behoove us to get the word out, but also do our due diligence and make sure that the product that comes before us at the end is something that we're proud of. Any further discussion? Seeing none. So, this vote is to initiate, which will send this to a joint public hearing between the Economic Development Committee and the planning board to be determined at a date between Counselor Dolan, who chairs our EDC committee, as well as Eric Torog, who heads the planning board, or Chair Roberts, sorry. All right, so all those in favor of initiating this ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. Now, we will move on to order 20-105.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council hereby initiates the following zoning change in accordance with MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 5. Amend zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, by amending the following sections and as indicated on the attached Exhibit A. 200-2.1, terms and words, Chapter 200, schedule of uses, 200-4.7, central commercial district, 200-4.8, limited commercial district, 200-4.9, general commercial district, 200-4.2, rural residential district, 200-4.3, suburban residential district, 200-4.4, urban residential district, 200-4.5, semi-residential district, 200-4.6, health services district, and further, amend the table of contents and index of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield.
Okay, so motion's been made in second. This vote, I guess, will have discussion, but again, this is to initiate. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Absentions? It's not 11 o'clock yet, we're doing really well. All right, so motion passes. Next, we will move to order 20-106.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council hereby initiates the following zoning change in accordance with MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 5. Amend zoning ordinance, Chapter 200-5.2, table of dimensional requirements as indicated on the attached Exhibit A. And further amend the table of contents and index of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield. Oh, that one was easy.
Motion's been made second. Discussion. Seeing none, we will take a vote. Again, this is to initiate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. And lastly, as part of this packet, we will take order FY20-107.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council hereby initiates the following zoning change in accordance with MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 5. Amend zoning ordinance, Chapter 200-6.5, parking requirements as indicated on attached Exhibit A. And further amend the table of contents and index of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield.
Motion's been made second. Again, to initiate this order, discussion. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on both the heating system for the police department, as well as the feasibility study for the library, and it is 10:21 PM. There was nobody written on the sheet to speak to these. So, at this point, Vice President Wheeler. 140.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY20-59, upon recommendation of the mayor, and in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 63, order that $36,423 be appropriated from Fund 1610, sale of city-owned land, to provide matching funds for a green communities grant to replace the heating system for the police department, which was tabled at the December 18, 2019 City Council meeting.
Again, this is to take from the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? All right, we are on the table. Report from committee.
This received a unanimous positive recommendation.
Any rationale?
It's really just, it's a good deal for the city because it's matching grants, and we don't have to put up the majority of the funds, so we thought it made sense.
Great. Discussion. Counselor Disorder.
I thought this was absolutely wonderful, that we're going to be saving $9,000 a month, when I feel if it's $9,000 in, in heating expenses annually, just for putting this system in, $125,000 grant, I believe, that we were getting, so kudos to, kudos to the Carol Collins and, that's all in favor of it.
Any further discussion, Counselor Elmer?
Can you point about, even if they build a new security facility, for the people to guard, this is like...
Further discussion. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. Let's see, where are we here? Oh, nope. Okay, so Vice President Wheeler. Page 142.
Thank you. I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order... the table Order Number FY20-060, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, order that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the amount of $150,000 for a library feasibility study to identify and estimate the costs of ADA and building code requirements of the Greenfield Public Library. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $150,000 pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, or any other enabling statute, and the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept and expend any federal and/or state grants or bond premiums available for this project to be used to reduce the appropriation. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects, which was tabled at the December 18, 2019, City Council Meeting.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Report from committee.
Have we taken the question?
Oh, sorry. Motion's been made second, so yes, we're taking this from the table. Is it 11 o'clock yet? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Can I have the nose raised high?
It still comes off, it just needs to be turned around.
So majority vote to take from the table, so we're on the table. Now I will hear a report from committee, please.
This received a unanimous negative recommendation from Ways and Means. As you heard the mayor say, there's not necessarily a need for this now. In fact, the feasibility study would probably not be applicable if the city were to sell to a private entity. So I guess I don't want to say too much about the will of the committee, but let's just say it was a negative recommendation.
Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Dolan.
I'd like to move to table indefinitely. And just for clarification, this just means this is a quiet way to kill this item, so that it doesn't keep coming back on our agendas.
Okay, so that's non-debatable. So unfortunately, we have to vote at this time. So you gave the description of what indefinitely is, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Raise your hand high. One opposed. Absentions? Two absentions. Motion is tabled. Counselor, and, okay. Counselor Gwin, page 143. Oh, wait, yeah, is that, was that A and O? Where was the stipend? It was Ways and Means as well?
It's Ways and Means.
Okay. Counselor, I mean, Vice President Wheeler.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the city of Greenfield, as written in the strike-through attached Tier 2, Chapter 56, Article 7, stipend for school board members and city councilors, Section 18, annual stipend effective January 1, 2023, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield.
Motion's been made, second. Was this, no, this was not on the table. Was this heard at your committee, or no?
The committee discussed this, and intentionally took no action.
Discussion. Counselor Dolan.
Just a point of order. I believe this was tabled at the last meeting?
It was the last meeting in December?
Oh, yes, you're right.
It was the last meeting.
I think it was.
Counselor Disorder. I remember, I watched this. You didn't table it, you decided to send it to a committee.
That's right.
See, that television is very helpful. My memory didn't fail me.
Counselor Dolan.
So I was present at Ways and Means tonight, and we realized that some of the data hadn't gotten to new councilors. This has been kicked down the road several times, but it can't go into effect for four years anyway. So at this point, I'll make a motion to tables, just so folks can get all the information.
Motion's been made in second. Non-debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? One abstention. Counselor 4G.
I didn't hear what she said.
Did you want to change to a no? I don't think we can change votes after I call the order. Do I declare it?
You did not declare that I heard, so she could change.
Okay. Okay, motion is tabled. All right. Counselor Gwin, did your committee hear the resolution? Did anyone hear a resolution? We just moved it forward. Okay, so I'm going to have you, may I please have you read on page 144?
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the attached resolution titled Wilson's Department Store. The Greenfield City Council hereby recognizes and acknowledges the contributions of Wilson's Department Store, the Reed O'Neill family, and their employees for their commitment to Franklin County and to Greenfield for 137 years of service. Wilson's will be terribly missed.
Disorder.
Disorder? Am I saying it wrong?
Disorder.
Disorder. I thought I was saying that. Okay, I will harden my G for you.
I just, I thought you were going to get it right to begin with.
Whatever my accent is. And would you like to speak?
Not to this.
Okay. Discussion. Counselor 4G.
It's not apostrophe.
That's right.
I will accept that friendly amendment to remove the apostrophe. Any further discussion, Counselor Gwin?
I just want to reiterate the fact that Wilson's was so synonymous with Greenfield for so long. I sat on this council with Tammy Boragard for, for years. She was council president, I believe, when, when, one of the years I served. And they contributed to the community in so many ways, and their employees contributed in so many ways. They weren't only a retailer, they, they were part of Greenfield, and it will be truly missed. And as time moves on, and I wish Kevin and his family and everyone all the best, but they contributed so much history here, and they, and they'll be missed.
Thank you. I echo that sentiment. So thank you for highlighting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? The resolution passes. All right, so we'll move on to the part of our program, and it is a program, presentation of petitions or similar papers. Seeing none. Would anyone like to do a report of their subcommittee? Counsel, Vice President Wheeler?
Very brief, because it's 10:33. Ways and Means, in addition to the, the reports already given tonight, voted a unanimous positive recommendation to raise the mayor's salary to $85,000 per year, so that would probably be coming before the council next month. And Ways and Means also began the discussion of potentially moving our meeting, which could potentially allow council to begin earlier.
Thank you, Vice President Wheeler, and I really do appreciate a forward look into what's coming from Ways and Means. So if anyone else, Counselor Gwin.
I want to pair with Counselor Wheeler and talk a minute about the compensation for the mayor. We did look at that, at appointments and ordinances also, and we sent a recommendation base on the wording, but none of the fiscal possibilities, because we wanted to hear it. But in addition to that, which really doesn't come from appointments and ordinances, but I think we have an issue with the paperwork that we were presented for 56-17. In Section A, and I just pointed this out to Counselor Wheeler, we were given A, B, and C to look at. A, in 2012, you added a 1 and 2 under A, which gave the mayor a raise based on they could give themselves, or herself, a raise based on a pri, a set of rules that were set up. I don't believe this council's seen those, and that's part of A, which you're making decisions on. It's A1 and 2. So in order to make a correct determination for the language on A, I think you have to look at the present A that we're using in the code, because that is how Counselor Martin has received $81,000 in compensation, and not 70 to his salary, because his salary is not 70, it was currently 81, based on the formula that was voted by this body in 2012. So I think we need to look at that, because A has two subsections that we weren't presented, I think as an error, not as anything. A, B, and C were given to us, but not in their entirety, so we're not making a rational decision based on what is in the code.
So perhaps, and so this is why reports of committee are very important, and so perhaps, I think, resubmitting the full language back to A and O for February's meeting, and then perhaps not hearing this right away, kind of restarting the process. Vice President Wheeler?
I just wanted to note that Ways and Means did have those, those two, Section 1 and 2, I believe, the Kohler step and the 5%. But certainly, if, if it's your prerogative to put it back to A and O, that makes perfect sense.
And I think your meeting in February's first, early in the month, and so that will jive well with the, the flow of events. So thank you for pointing that out. And I'd almost be interested to see the language, the sub-language, because the reset to 70, in my opinion, is just so outdated, and it's not competitive. And so looking at that language in its entirety will be helpful. Counselor Gwin.
Yeah, we were unanimous in our language to strike C, but our questions were on A, which was, had the, the salary in it, but 1 and 2 of subsection A were not included. So we, I was not aware that the mayor has a way of, if they choose to increase their salary, there's a procedure, which means their base is subject to change by approval of our budget every year.
Yep. And from our past budget cycles, I think we're well aware of that. Great. Any further reports from committee? Nope, seeing none. Unfinished business. Old business. New business. We have a first reading. Counsel, Vice President Wheeler, page 145.
City Council First Reading, January 15, 2020. Approve $664.80 FY19 invoice ParTech Solutions. Appropriate $169,099 for Greenfield Education Association Unit C contract.
And for, thank you. And so for other new business, no one's here, we're not recorded live, but I did want to put in a plug for the 98th Winter Carnival, happening the 31st through the 2nd. There's events all over the city all weekend long. Some of our favorites, the ice sculptures, parade of lights, fireworks, sleigh bell run. All of the registration is open now, as of today, on the recreation website, greenfieldrecreation.com/wintercarnival. And so if we can do our good work in the community of spreading the news for this really longstanding event, and cross your fingers for some snow and some cold weather. Motion for reconsideration. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absent, oh, okay, he wants to meet until 11. All right. We will adjourn at 10:39 PM.